Here we go. So I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board July 13th, 2016, meeting in Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. It's a few minutes past seven. Begin with approval of minutes. We have February 24th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2016.
Second? Motion's been made, it's been seconded to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2016. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
We just have one quick correction and it is with respect to line 128 and line 134. G. Comiskie, that should be the spelling of that name, that was someone that was, gave testimony?
Yeah.
That's C.O.M.I.S.K.E.Y. And that's 134 and, what is it, 128?
128. Wait, 128 and 134.
That was the only, that was all I saw.
You took the words out of my mouth.
Anyone else?
I do, I have a, when you started out with members present, town council was there, Jonathan Eichman, I think he should be listed as attending. And on page, the second page, where you're talking about the A&R number 57, I think you should squeeze in there with town council review, because that, he was helping us with that and advising us. And, let me see now. Larry Graham had a lot of comment, but I don't see anything in there about him, about the public hearing on healthy forms. He was present and he was doing a lot of explaining on his summary. You have, I don't think anything about him.
I did have it, but I cut it out because I had six pages.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to put it back in.
Well, it depends on what the board wants. The thing is, is that when, when you bring, I think, I think this was Chris's thing, when Chris was, rest his peace, was here, he used to say when they came in with the, a document like that, a summary or an analysis, you would label it as Exhibit A or Exhibit B or Exhibit 1 or, and then you would include it in the minutes, you know, we're in the packet for concerning that development. And I think that's a legal thing that he was bringing forward.
For reference.
Do you remember that?
Yeah.
So I, I don't know whether the board wants to continue that process or what. But I think that's, I think that's important because we do pay him and I think, you know, we should show what he's presenting, what he's, what he's providing for us. That's all. And, and the answer to your question there on 93, you got the questions in there from us, but I don't think you have the answers. You know, we can't, you know, like, Harry, you mentioned the sodium hydrochloride. And if I remember rightly, it was, the answer was that the fellow, the applicant said he's going to hold bleach, a five gallon container of bleach for that and...
I'll be honest with you, Tilly, these were so long ago that I don't know if that was the, the hearing that, the night that we asked the questions and then subsequent hearing, they came back and answered them all?
Right.
Or if that was the night that they answered them.
I hear you because I thought, I had the same thing. Did we get the answers?
Yeah. I know we did get, yeah, we did get the answers. I don't know if we got them at the continuation.
Well, just so you guys know, these were four hour meetings. This one is next one.
Oh, yeah.
If you let me know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to do a transcript, but I'm happy to do something that you're doing.
Yeah, and we don't want you to do one.
But I thought it was important that you got credit for the intelligent questions.
Yeah.
And then in the summary, or just that it was, the question was asked, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. Due diligence.
And then in the summary, it's covered that that was discussed without word for word.
Right.
But at least if you want more, I'm happy, I'm happy to do.
Well, it depends on how the board feels.
I think Har- Harry's point is...
I've heard this a hundred times.
Well, Har- Harry's point is, the thing is, it's four months old and the more detail now, it's more likely to bring things back from four months ago. But your point over, because we did present questions.
Yeah.
And then the question, the answers were brought up subsequently. If that's the case, in this case, I would say don't do anything, I don't need anything more done with this. But I would like to make sure that the responses are somewhere documented.
Yeah.
I suspect that when we see the March 9th meeting minutes, that we're going to see those responses.
We'll learn, yeah, we'll find out.
Well, actually, no, because I summarized it, because that's another four hour meeting.
Okay.
So I'm, but I'm happy to do this, separate question, answer, question, answer. There was a long discussion.
Yeah, I know, it was.
It was hours.
I know.
It's really tough.
So this, my, I'm sorry, had you finished, Tilly?
Well, the thing, the thing that I was going to say is that this applicant is going to come back in five years. So, you know, it might be a good thing for us to, you know, to have some answers and see if they follow through.
We did get the answers written. They were written.
They have a report, yeah.
They were written.
Oh, absolutely, the report, the report.
And submitted, yeah.
Took them, yeah.
Okay.
And they went over the report.
I didn't even remember that.
I mean, that's in the file, I'm sure, I'm sure it's in the file.
Okay, so if they were written, that would have been another exhibit that we could have noted, you know?
I, I think for, for myself, I think identifying what's handed out, the exhibits is something that should be part, if you can do that, I think that's very helpful. I, I think these minutes, I think there was, I'm not sure Andrea, if there was a little bit of a struggle about what to edit and what not to edit, because there's so much to edit and...
And also trying to do the workload in the office.
Yeah, exactly.
Sure.
Exactly. What, this is me, but it's something I think, it's something that the planning board has talked about many, many times and perhaps it's only going to get finally resolved if we put it down in writing as a protocol. But my understanding of the way we're doing meeting minutes is they basically are not to recreate any transcript whatsoever. They're not meant to put down the question and the answer and the question and the answer. They're meant to be just summaries. But the most important part is the, the meeting held, it's opened, it's closed, how that has taken place, the votes, if there are any, what the motions were, and that that's what the meeting minutes are for. And so I, I'm not for adding anything to this other than, I think the exhibits are pretty factual and pretty short if they, but that's me. And I think we've talked about this before, but if the board wants to do it different than, I guess we...
No, I don't think doing it as a dialogue really is helpful. If we, if we need a detailed review, we go to the video.
And you would have a 45, 50 page thing for this particular meeting, you know? Not all four of them, but this one, I mean, this was a very quick meeting, a lot of information was quickly too. So there was a lot, I mean, a lot of discussion, John and Larry and you would have a 50 page document.
Are there, are there a number of exhibits since you reviewed the meeting, the tape, are there a number of exhibits that they handed out that you would be adding to this that isn't in here right now that you can think of?
I can't think off the top of my head. I, I know that they were going on, they, the next meeting is what I'm working on right now and they have the draft decision, I mean, and they, you're going over their points of the letter that they wrote and so those things, I can definitely put them in the next one. But I'll put in what belongs in here, I'll go.
So maybe then the approval of this from the board is with those additions, because that's how you guys...
I, I'll be honest with you, I'm perfectly happy with these. I know that every meeting that goes by, we're following one more behind.
I agree.
You've got to get to the point where we're doing two a night, two per meeting, or we're always going to be six months behind.
So, so in that, in that light, you know, you can even make them shorter, you know, to catch, to catch up.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Yeah, by editing the exhibits, that'll be extremely shorter, won't it?
Yeah.
So go minimalist and...
Go minimalist until we catch up and...
Yeah, and when it's really important or the board feels it's important, we'll...
Sounds good.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
So, yeah.
I guess I'd like to call the questions to approve them.
Yeah, so, so the motion, let's see, so the motion was to approve the minutes as written, seconded, we've had discussions, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
It wasn't as written, it was to approve the minutes and we made some corrections, we corrected.
Some corrections, yeah.
Correct. Correct on the corrections.
Okay.
So with the corrections noted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Meeting minutes. Correspondence, there's a number of items down there. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about with regards to any of that correspondence or you ready to move on to vouchers? I'm all set? Okay. So move on to vouchers and the agenda has Merrimack Valley Planning Commission one first.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to approve the voucher for the fiscal year next, 2017, assessment of Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, $2,912.72.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission fiscal year 17, 2017 assessment in the amount of $2,912.72. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So there's one.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve voucher of the United States Post Office for Postage Meter to the amount of $100.
I thought it was 55.21.
55, 55.
55.21?
It was changed to, it was changed to 100.
Okay. I'll, I'll, if it needs to be 100, I'll, I'll second the motion for $100.
That was maybe a question I had. So the motion has been made and seconded to approve the U.S. Poster Office Postage Meter invoice in the amount of $100. Any discussion?
Actually, I am a little confused.
Okay.
Because the, the actual voucher sheet has $227.50 up top and then $100 on the bottom, up here, 227.50 and 100 here.
And 50.21.
And then 55.21.
Do you have the original voucher?
Can you clarify that?
I can clarify that, if that's helpful.
That's, that's yours.
So there's a multitude of things that happened on that one. So originally, we got a voucher for negative $55.21. So that's what, why it was 55.21. Andrea was nice enough to do the vouchers for us. It was just a small typo up the top that said 227.50, so she was kind enough to change that to the 100. The 100 changed because you have $55, but I added an additional 100 to keep you for the rest of the year. Does that sound reasonable?
You lost me there.
I did.
You added in an additional 100?
Yes, because you, you need postage for the entire year, correct? 55 won't cover you for the whole fiscal year.
But the balance in the meter is negative 55.
Negative 55?
So 55.21 would bring it up to zero.
It was negative 55 and then they gave me a correction. They gave me a corrected one that said it was 100, so there you go.
That we have 100 in there?
Yeah, so I had another 100, yeah.
At the end of this, when we sign this, when we correct that.
You're going to bring up at the top, we'll have 200, right?
No, actually, altogether, it'll be 100, because she said it was negative, oh, I didn't bring it, I wish I did. She, the girl in accounting told me that she made a mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, how does this sound, Mr. Chairman?
I'm just, I'm not sure I understand it, but go ahead.
It sounds as though we had a deficit of 55.
We did, yes.
If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, by amending that and initialing it to be 100 up at the top for the total?
Yeah.
We can make it 100.
Yeah.
I believe we voted for 100.
Oh, it wouldn't be a tax on that.
That will be 100 that will go in, they, if, if the worst case scenario, the, it'll be a positive $45, something like that.
Yeah.
If we need an additional amount, we can do it another way.
Correct, that doesn't make sense.
That makes sense, the positive 45.
Yeah, the only thing we need to do is amend that top number, right?
Thank you.
For the actual side. Do them all the time to see if they...
Do you have the original?
So it's right here, but it looks like you already did it, so I'll, I'll initial it, we'll all initial it and conclude it down, just got the 100 there, 100. Okay, so with that said, seeing no more discussion, and I'm just going to repeat the motion to approve the voucher in the amount of $100 for the U.S. Post Office Poster, Postage Meter fiscal year 2017. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so we're going to sign it.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve voucher for North Boston Media Group for Purpose of Town Planner ads to the amount of $600.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the North Boston Media Group Town Planner advertisements in the total amount of $600. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tilly?
Aye.
Yeah. All right, unanimous. And then we have one more.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, to pay the legal voucher for, the warrant voucher for the Spalding Road, legal ad, $227.25.
Second? Motion's been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher for North Boston Media Group legal ads for public hearing notice of Common Driveway Special Permit for Calvin Drive in the total amount of $227.50. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
As I understand it, this applicant withdrew, however, he withdrew after the ad went in. So I feel that the applicant is responsible for the cost.
Is the, I'm assuming that's the case also, is the applicant here tonight?
He wouldn't be here till 7:30 if he was going to be.
Question?
Please.
Did the applicant pay the filing fee for...
He did not, no.
Oh. Oop. Complete application.
Should.
Not have been advertised.
So...
Appable. We pay. Lesson learned. Moving on.
Going to hold it off until he shows up?
Yeah, and we'll ask.
Okay.
Yeah, the board all right, asking?
True.
Fine with that.
All right, see what happens. Okay, so we're going to hold him out. Moving to, we have one public hearing tonight and then we have old business, we have three items for old business, which is Noonan's Phasing Proposal is the first on old business, lots 7, 10, bounds placement discussion with the planning board, and then item three for old business is lot 1A and three, on 3 Crescent Meadow Lane, request for a building permit. So the public hearing, we need to open the public hearing for the Common Drive Special Permit 1A, 1B, rear Spalding.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have the legal notice in front of me, but I will make a motion to open the special permit hearing for what would be lots 1A and 1B, rear Spalding Road, for a common driveway special permit.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the common driveway special permit for 1A, 1B, rear Spalding Road. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so is the applicant here for that? Okay. So my, my understanding is that, so they, what you all have in your packet is you have those two forms, one is withdraw without prejudice and one is just plain withdraw the application. And my understanding is, in this packet, I haven't looked at it yet, but you included the withdraw without prejudice email.
Correct, I did.
So we have from them in writing that. I'm all set to grant them that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the emails from the applicant's attorney. I'd like to add those into the record, asking for withdrawal without prejudice.
So noted. I just want to find it.
And given that, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that email will be made part of the record. Do you have something for...
Yes.
Just assign, just assign. Heidi, which one of these is the one that has the withdraw without prejudice? I'm sure it's here and I'm just not seeing it.
There's one on July, there's two, they're both on July 6.
I just want to see it. It's a little bit defined here. I'll move you. I'm collecting these. Do you want to withdraw the...
It was a series of emails?
Yeah, it is.
Please, make the request without prejudice.
That's right. That's series.
Got it.
Of emails. That whole thread being...
Okay.
You got the original to sign?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct.
We have a meeting scheduled.
I'm Robert Watts.
Did I sign the wrong one?
No, no. It says Bob Watts. Miller, you signed mine, but that's all right. It says Bob Watts. I'm going to sign Robert Watts above Matilda Evangelista.
Put a big arrow.
Okay.
So there's no confusion.
How could it possibly be confusing? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, just a quick question, I assume this is what will be filed with the town clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to file a notice of decision stating that it was withdrawn?
That is what that is.
Yeah.
I think that's all, Harry.
Oh, great. I'm knowing that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing or maybe we should take, ask for public input?
There was no one here from the public, but double check, so, yeah, so.
Great, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Common Driveway Special Permit, lots 1A and 1B, rear Spalding Road.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing for the Common Driveway Special Permit, 1A, 1B, rear Spalding Road. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to old business, we have phasing proposal from Noonan's and come on up, folks. And...
Good evening.
I think what we'll do after you give us what it is you're talking about, we'll see if there's anyone in the public that want, that has any questions about it. And then Larry's not here tonight, but I think in the supplemental package, there's something of the, from him, is that right? Yep, there it is. Okay, so we've got his comments and then we can, the board can talk about that.
Good evening. Scott Cameron with the Moore Cameron Group. The ones are all here tonight, Frank Deluna, counsel.
Scott, can you turn that so that the, so that Bob can see it?
Yeah, thank you. So I trust you received our letter, request for a phasing of the project and give you an update where we're at with it. I'm going to pass around some photos that you can browse through as I highlight the areas on the plans that are complete. Pass those that way. Stepping anything and pulling up applications, I'll pass those that way. So they've been working away at it, as I'm sure you've seen driving by, and they have completed the miniature golf facility. Passed around photos that are showing that, the facility. With that, they've completed all the stormwater management, that includes the rain garden, the stormwater basin, all the drainage that they did to separate out the municipal drain system and create that trunk line, that's all been put in. And they have brought the parking area pretty much up to subgrade, so it's ready to go. It's just got the gravel base on it right now and they've demarcated all the parking spaces in the gravel area with just like a wire fencing, just so people can see where to park and line up. They've got little orange flags saying where people stack up. So the parking area is graded and ready to go and what they would like to do, and what they're requesting to do tonight, is a temporary release on the miniature golf facility, bring that online, start to generate some income from it, make it functional. They've put in, they've moved a shed that had been used for sales in this part of the property associated with the nursery up to this area, they've finished it to serve as a temporary center for people to buy their tickets and get their golf clubs and golf balls, and that's located right here on the property. Sidewalk's in, the handicap parking spaces are graded in, so there's handicap access up to this area. And this would be a temporary basis and they would be looking to start the building construction in the following season. So that would be probably next July when the weather becomes fair again and good for construction. And that's, that's basically the gist of where the project's at. You saw in the photos, the condition of the course, it looks great. And I've been discussions with you, any questions?
So before we come to the board, is there anyone from the public that, that had any questions at this point in time? Okay. Heidi, was there anything that you wanted to specifically address at this point and then we'll bring it to the board?
No, also, I did go out on the site and I met with Scott. He also gave me a tour and it looks, it looks really good. It looks like it, he's really moving forward and putting together a good plan, so. Those are my comments.
Okay.
We have Larry's comments.
So I'm just, so I'm looking at Larry's comments for the first time tonight and so I'm not going to get too far into that. Who, who would like to start, if anybody, with questions?
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
My one question is why? That's, that's what I didn't hear.
Well, the project's been very expensive and to get everything else done and completed, they have to obviously invest in that. While they have the mini golf facility done and ready, the folks that built the golf facility had to come in and do it in a certain window, they're, they're not based locally. They're, they're not based locally, so they had the time to come in and do it. And it's finished. So instead of letting that sit there for a year and wait, everything's up and running. Temporary measures have been put in for, you know, handicap access and servicing the facility. You have existing bathrooms because you have the existing retail center. Everything's already there, ready to go. This would just be, uh, a one-year delay on the building construction, so they can recoup a little, get that up and running, and then get everything going again next summer and finish the project up for next season.
Anything else? Gentlemen, any questions?
Couple. Procedurally, formatically, is this, is the board going to consider this a significant, uh, change to the site plan? Or an insignificant change to the site plan? I noticed, Mr. Chairman, you asked for public comment, but I don't see how there could be any. This isn't noticed. I mean, there was no public notice given or anything like that. At this point, I'm sure you're familiar with what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't, we haven't done it.
We have to know if this is an actual significant change or insignificant change. I, um, I don't know the breadth of it, so I really don't know.
If I may address that, Frank Deluna? There's no change in the project, it's just the timing of the project. The, the project is itself is, remains at the same scope and scale, the same topography, all the same features. It's just, uh, some breathing room is needed. And that's what the request is for.
Um, it, it, the implication is that, um, this additional work, um, is, is being delayed because the cost of the actual, the, the actual mini golf course was greater than you anticipated.
And, and the infrastructure that had to be done before the miniature golf was put in. There was a lot of demands on us to do a lot of things before we actually, you know, we started to go into the project. You knew what the miniature golf course cost would be in the building, but you didn't, I mean, we're kinda new at
Mini golf, yeah.
So I mean, the, the, the actual upfront cost before you even put a shovel in the ground was a lot higher than what we had expected. So, uh, we just need a little breather here and get some money coming in, then we can finish this project up.
And if you recall, just, it's been a while since we've been here talking about it, but the drainage system from, from off-site municipal is a drain line right across the property. And through this process, they've separated that out. And before we do the, the final CO, the town will be granted an easement that they're going to give, give to the town for the drainage system. And they're gonna, that's part of the, the permit, uh, decision. So that, that was a significant cost to get that drainage system separated offline and then to give the easement, uh, eventually.
And that, and that has been installed?
The drainage has been installed.
Drainage, has, has Peter taken a look at it and signed off on it?
Peter was there installing.
He was involved installing it.
He was there.
We didn't pay for, you know, the town paid for, uh, a portion of it and paid for a portion of it.
To, do, were the, um, were the easements recorded?
Uh, the way the decision's written before the final CO is, is granted, we have to take care of all that. So we're gonna be putting the, you know, it's in now, so we can locate the structures and get that going. That will all be part of, of the final kind of closeout documents.
So this is essentially a partial certificate of, I don't, I don't get that.
It would almost be, I'm thinking, Harry, a temporary.
I didn't know you could do that.
I think you can, yeah.
Really?
And, um.
Interesting, okay.
So that would be.
Glad to hear that, though.
But with that being said, for myself, um, so I, you know, I'm looking at Larry's, um, or from Jerry McDonald's and, um.
Well, that addresses a lot of the things that he's, at least the last paragraph.
It, it does. It, it does, um, but I, I, um, I guess, I just wanna make sure that the, in the phasing of it, that the public's health, safety, welfare is addressed if we were to go ahead with this. And, and I, I don't want to take this tonight, getting it for the first time tonight, and say yes to that. And I guess what I would like to do is, um, if you can, um, work out with Larry for our next meeting, um, to have something from him, you know, saying that in his opinion, all of those issues are addressed properly, that would do it for me. Otherwise, you're asking me to make this decision tonight based on getting this for the first time tonight.
Right, so, and, and I'd like to walk you through those because I don't think there's anything really that needs to happen to satisfy these. These are just things they observed with the current condition of the site and I can walk you right through them.
Okay.
While we're here, we might as well.
Yeah, that's fine, but I'm still gonna be looking for something from our technical review agent to assure me of this.
So, uh, one of his, the first comment was talking about a handicap accessible porta potty, portable, portable bathroom. So, uh, the handicap parking space is gonna be situated here. Right now, there's an existing shed here. If we're, if we were to tuck in a temporary portable bathroom, it'd be right next to the shed, uh, in the corner of the parking lot. However, as you can imagine, when they stay like today, you have a full bathroom facility right here. No one's gonna use that porta potty. They're gonna go to the bathroom with running water and it's not a hundred degrees in a portable bathroom. So.
Is that one HP accessible?
It, yeah, yeah, the one over here, yeah, I believe so.
You believe so?
No, it is.
It is.
But it's a full bathroom, yeah, so.
Okay, I'm not familiar with it, I seem to remember a step somewhere.
It's in the ice cream.
Yeah, seem to remember a step or something.
Okay, so, you know, again, that would be something that could easily be brought in, um, if, if, if it was the board's, uh, wish. Temporary fencing, what he's talking about is along the edge of the sidewalk. You've seen the photos that they have the fencing all throughout the, the miniature golf course. It would just be a, an installation of that along the sidewalk here to demarcate between the concrete sidewalk that's poured and the parking area. That's what he's talking about there. And.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Along the sidewalk, if the, uh, the photos, it's probably a good photo of it. They poured a concrete sidewalk for the plan up to this area. And, uh, between the sidewalk and the parking area, which is gravel, there's, it just goes parking into the sidewalk. So what he's asking to is to provide.
There's no curb.
A, a safety, just a, a barrier there. And so we would put a similar post and rope system that would provide a barrier to the sidewalk.
That would provide a visual barrier.
Yeah.
Man, that's what will be there.
But not a, it won't provide a vehicular barrier for the chopper.
Yeah, there's a, it, it comes up, there's a two to three foot grade differential between the parking area and the sidewalk.
Oh, so they're not going up over that?
Nobody's driving up over that, so.
Is this a correct picture?
That, that's one of the pictures there, yep. So you can see the concrete sidewalk, you can see the grade coming up.
Got it.
That's one of the reasons why the fencing is, is gonna be required.
For the people, for the people going on the other direction.
No anticipation, a car's gonna get up.
It's the other way around.
And so the third item is the timeframe that he's talking about, that the board, and really he's asking you, are you comfortable with the timeframe that we're proposing? So we're proposing, uh, the six items in here that we're proposing are basically all related to the building and the parking area. And the timeframe we're proposing is to have that underway by July fifteenth of next construction season. And in that third comment, he's asking you if you're comfortable with that, uh, that proposal. So these items, you know, the porta potty, that's, that's a yes or no. Would you like to see one or not? The fencing, they're already planning to put in, and are you comfortable with the time, so?
The fifteenth is, is the, is the date that we're shooting for. And the rationale for that is it's after the landscaping season. So up until the beginning of July, you have lots of people on the ground, they're buying, thank God, all right? So this, what will happen is move it to July, middle of July, you get all the contractors, you got a majority of the people who aren't, you know, coming to the, uh, facility. One of the reasons why the, uh, golf course is, is, is a blessing. So that's why the fifteenth is there, it's after, it's after the busy season. Hopefully, it'll come up, uh, be finished before, uh, the season starts again in mid-September.
So July two thousand seventeen, mid-September?
Well, that's where, I can't guarantee the mid-September, you never know what happens, but we'd like to have it done by the fall season, yes.
I think that the, the important thing is construction's starting, you know, we're getting this underway by a certain date. And at that point, the work area would be fully fenced off with a construction fence and screening, so that would be totally separated at that point, once, once the, the construction's underway.
And the reason you don't wanna start before July two thousand seventeen, excuse me, is because of it's the ski season for everyone coming in and out?
They ran into it this year trying to.
That too, and it just, we get our spring monies in and it get, it gives us that time period when we are able to start the building.
That's why you don't start it during the winter when no one's there.
Right.
Yeah, but it, you're, what you, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was, uh?
Yeah.
What, what you're saying is that this time of year, like today, a year from today, you were going to be able to do the construction of the driveway.
We will have the funds.
You will have the funds, but no driveway yet, no parking lot yet.
It is.
We have a parking.
Yeah, it's all there. In fact, there's room, it's marked out for eighty-six parking spaces and there are ninety-nine, so they're only short thirteen from what's on the plan here. And those thirteen are right here where they currently, they still have the inventory, the outside display areas there. So there's plenty of parking already, it's already set and ready to go.
How do people find their parking spaces?
It's, they put in, um, rebars that stick up four feet and they're, they're all painted orange and there's flags, orange flags at each space where you park. And then the paved areas, it's still painted. So those, those spaces, so from this area up in here and then on the edge, you see it in the photo with the sidewalk. I think you can actually see it on that photo, you can see the, uh, orange flags, you know, so the flags are spaced every nine feet.
These you're talking about?
Yep.
The holes?
Do, do you have any concern about freestanding rebar and kids walking around and someone falling on it?
It's, it's tall enough, again, they're, they're sticking up out of the ground, four feet up.
We're gonna put tennis balls on top.
Yeah, they actually have rebar caps, they're red caps, it'll, no.
So, and they're, and they're taller for a little kid wouldn't be able to fall on them. Maybe they're dancing around them, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, please.
One of the things, uh, that it was in, brought up, uh, site egress improvements. What was supposed to happen, or what will happen before everything, when everything's done? What will happen out in the street?
So, uh, the prior condition, they actually had parking spaces all along here. And along here. Those have been removed, they've been painted over with black. And this area that will be, uh, curved is painted, it's striped. So it's white striping with the angles on it, which is a no parking. So nobody, so they've gotten rid of all the parking up in this area.
That's been done now, so.
That's, that's on the ground now.
The entrance is in compliance to what the diagram.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I'm reading something that says, um, the site egress improvements and work will be phased for seventeen will include site egress improvements.
Yes, well, that's the, that's the curbing, so there's gonna be curbing that's put in.
Oh, there's curbing that needs to be put in?
Yeah, eventually there will be curbing put in. Right now, temporarily, it's striped off, so they've gotten rid of the ability for anybody to park there.
Wasn't that the curbing that Larry Graham asked to have put in?
That was part of the site review, site plan review process.
Right, and, and I believe Larry had mentioned that.
Yeah, it was part of what everybody ended up agreeing on, that that was part of the agreed plan. Is there anywhere in Larry's letter here that he says, um, you know, these items being dealt with later and these temporary solutions, um, for him is okay, public health, safety, welfare, is there? I'm looking for something like that and I don't see it.
The correspondence is going through, uh, the board, so, um, I, it's not written in the email here.
Cause that, again, that's what I'm coming back to, for me. That, that's what, I'm, I'm looking to my technical review agent to basically tell us that the town is, is protected in those issues.
The, if I may.
Yeah.
If the, um, if, other than the, the technical issues that the town engineer had, if, if we're somewhat in favor of doing this, could we leave it up to the town engineer to do a final inspection and upon his approval, it would be okay?
Uh, it's not that I'm concerned that it will get done, cause it'll be a temporary CO and so it won't, that'll only go for a certain period of time. And then that'll run out and you won't be able to do anything unless you build it. So I'm not concerned about it getting built. I'm concerned about, and I'm always speaking for myself, but I'm concerned about approving this phasing plan when the total, the total plan was designed and the health, safety, welfare issues of how you come in, how you drive, how you park, where people walk, don't walk, bathrooms, all those sorts of things were part of the approved plan. And I understand why you need to phase it now, but in a sense, that's changing the original approved plan. And so I just wanna make sure that what we're changing it to in terms of this phase plan, that it's going to meet those requirements. And that's not gonna come from me, that's gonna come from our technical review agent.
Right, and, and the way, I guess I read this differently when I was reviewing it today, but the way I'm seeing this is, he's not saying, don't do this, I have concerns about X, Y, and Z. He's saying, if the board's willing to go with a phased approach, here's some things to discuss.
And I, and I, and I'm throwing it back to him, I'm gonna say, Larry, this isn't good enough for me. I think what he's trying to do here is help us, but I don't, I want him to tell me. I don't want him to say it's up to the board. And that's, that's me. That's me.
I, I guess, there's only, we've, we've already lost, because it's been a lot to construct this thing, we've already lost half the season. So you're asking us to go, you know, another two, I don't know when you meet again, but we're, we'll be ready next week to open, Tuesday was the day. Uh, so you're asking us to delay another two weeks, which is, could, takes another good, I, I kinda, if, if the engineer could just make a phone call.
Yeah, let's back up a little bit, so.
Let me, let me, I just wanna respond to that, though, Steve, and I, and I, 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 I'm, I'm sensitive to the position you're in. But I sent out an email to you guys, I didn't hear from you folks, we didn't hear from you folks. Everything was quiet per certain, you were doing your work and, and, and I sent out an email where I said, please don't put the planning board in a spot where you're asking us to approve something on the night you show up, you know? Get this phasing issue going sooner rather than later. That was the gist of it. And sure enough, you have done just that. You could've come in with this while you were doing the work. You could have. And you wouldn't have put us in that position to try to, so I just, it's, I don't think it's, I, I'm just uncomfortable where, that we're delaying you two weeks is somehow our issue.
No, we're, we're not saying, we're not saying that at all. You know, we submitted the late, you know, this letter was submitted two weeks ago and we thought that was enough time for you to take a look at the property or do what you needed to do in that interim. I didn't submit it because the email you sent out was a couple days before the hearing, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whenever that was before the holiday. And I don't wanna jam that letter into you right before the hearing, it wasn't gonna give you enough time. So I felt putting it just after the hearing would be more appropriate, give you enough time from then to now to take a look at it.
I understand, I understand.
So, I, I wanna, I wanna phrase my question in a different way because I'm, I'm not asking to make a decision, but let's presume that Larry's all, all set with this. What's the board's position on a temporary CO? Presuming that he's okay with it and let's.
I'm tot, I, I'm only speaking for myself, I'm totally fine with that. And I want that to happen. If I had a magic wand and I could have Larry write a letter right now saying all of these issues are fine, I'd do it. That's me.
From my perspective, temporary OCs, I, I've, I've never dealt with them before. You either get an occupancy permit or you don't. I'd feel a little more comfortable hearing something from the building inspector that he would be willing to issue such an animal, which he may or may not wish to do.
I mean, you'll have to hear from him, but they, they do, they do issue.
I, I'll take it on your word, such an animal exists as long as it's in our building inspector's menagerie.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be a little concerned about the timing of it, what the expiration is. And, uh, when that expiration would occur.
Uh, it's, it's one year, it's a one-year delay. We're looking for July, I guess today's July thirteenth, so July.
Takes you a little bit to.
So July fifteenth?
July we start.
You'd be closing it down.
Well, we'd be starting, we would be breaking ground on what would be phase two by one year from now, that would be the plan.
Gotcha, and the facility, the golf facility would be closed at that point?
It would be, it would be, yeah, it would be running, so at that point.
So it's more, it extends for more than a year?
Right, yes.
Oh, okay, I thought somebody said it was a year, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I know, this, well, the, right, okay, so what we're proposing is we start the work within a one-year timeframe, so that it's underway and you can see it physically going within that one-year timeframe.
And it would be written in such a way, Harry, that if it had didn't start within that timeframe, the, the CEO would, would terminate. And if it then wasn't completed by. And if it then wasn't completed by a certain time, it would terminate. So there would be two checkpoints.
That's, that's, that's an interesting CO.
It's, it's the carrot at the end of the stick.
I understand. And I'm really, yeah, it's, we're, we're not very good at creating sticks here. We're not very good at that. Um, uh, I, I guess I'd have to see the, uh, the terms of the CO.
Yep.
I'd have to be comfortable with that because I think once you get it.
Two.
I don't know, I think a smart lawyer could keep it. And my concern is that those site improvements for the street, all of that occurs. We, this board has been in a position where applicants with a special permit, with conditions, come in. It's the same story everywhere. Everybody runs out of money, everybody's, all, all projects are more expensive than anticipated, every one of them. And, uh, they ask for relief from certain things for a bit. And then things don't happen. And at that point, it's too late, occupancy permit is put out. I think if you check our files, the building inspector, the last building inspector would tell us that once he issues an occupancy permit, that's it. He has, he has no stick anymore. And, um, he's powerless. He always, he, um, believe his advice was, um, abhorred. An escrow account that would allow the town to do all of the improvements that are not at this point done. Um, we've been burned before. It's not you, believe me. It's others. I can think of one such facility that does not have HP accessibility right now because this board.
Isn't that the difference between an occupancy permit and a temporary occupancy permit?
I, my understanding is it is.
It says you can rescind it.
Yeah.
What you're talking about is he gives us an outright occupancy permit, he, he has no teeth. But a temporary, he has teeth, he can rescind it, it says it right in it, I would assume.
I mean, I, I.
I think that we need to have that clarified.
I mean, I think that, I think that's.
We need his import. From my perspective, I need the building inspector's import even more than Larry Graham's, so.
Okay, so they, so there you go. Bob?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Harry. I, I wish this could be ready to go tomorrow. I really do. The, I do have a question about your construction schedule. Um, why aren't you doing it in the winter? Is it, is it cash flow issue?
It's really, yeah, and it's.
Fine, I don't wanna get.
It's very expensive to build in the winter too, everything's more expensive. You need additives to concrete, you need heat, you know, you just, things freeze.
But the work is gonna be done while the facility is active. And that's gonna be a little tricky in its own way.
Crews move slower, their hands are cold. That's why you don't see construction project going through the winter. Not last winter, it was fifty degrees all year, but.
We had some going for a long time.
The prior winter.
Yeah. Snow removal, you know.
Tilly, did you?
Well, like, I agree with, with Rob, uh, as a special permit, as you know, you have to consider the health and safety. That's priority. Uh, we couldn't approve anything without having that. The second thing is that, I'm, I'm thinking along the lines, okay, if this gets approved, and next year you're in the same dilemma, are, are we going, do we have that authority to shut them down?
The assumption, the, the assumption here, and this is an assumption, which you know what that stands for, right, so, but the assumption is that a CO, a temporary CO can be written in such a way that if they, there would be two checkpoints. One would be, they start at a certain time. If they don't, the project is dead.
Well, the, the, the use of it is dead. They, they would still keep building under the current permit, but they, they couldn't operate it anymore.
Correct, correct. They couldn't operate, thank you.
So the occupancy permit would be rescinded?
Correct. And then they have a second, which is, it's completed by a certain date. And if it's not, the same process would happen. So that's the assurance that the town will get what it needs to get. And I think, Harry, you know, to, to, I think that's one of the things that, you know, Matt's not here tonight, but, uh, that's one of the things that Harry needs to see is what this temporary occupancy permit's gonna look like. Please.
Just, and to respond to, uh, temporary occupancy permits, it says a temporary occup, occupant, yeah. A temporary certificate may be issued before the completion of the entire work governed by the permit, provided that such portion of portions shall not be occupied safely pri, you know, such portions shall be occupied safely prior to the full completion of the building or structure without endangering life or public welfare.
There you go.
And it's covered at seven eighty CMR one twenty point three.
That's what I've experienced, yeah.
I just wanna, I, I forget, it's, it's, it's not the verbiage of the, uh, the drop dead date or any of that. It's that the building inspector in this community is willing to issue those. Cause it is his call. And I, I mean, if we can get something in writing that he walked down there and he's comfortable with it.
Well, what I, what I, what I'd like, what I'd, what I'd like to propose, to try to not let this go any further, is that, what I'd like to propose is, is if the board's okay with it, is that the applicant, um, work with Larry, work with our technical review agent in terms of making sure that he's gonna write a letter that is gonna say, this thing is fine phased like this in terms of health, safety, welfare with all of these issues that are gonna be not built. And how you're going to build the temporary portions. And that takes care of that. And then, um, get a, uh, get a draft. How would we do that? Can we get a draft, just to look at a draft, uh, temporary occupancy permit with dates in it?
We, we can write one, or, or if you have one, we can, we can work, work with, with staff to, to put that together for you.
I, I would, I would think that have it come from our own guy would be a wise thing, cause he's, he's.
That'd be, yeah.
And so if you can do that and get that all back in a week, you know, then everybody gets their stuff for the next meeting and, I would like to think that the board's gonna be in a position, assuming all that stuff is pretty clear, that the board's gonna say, yeah, guys, go ahead.
Are you saying you're gonna meet next week?
No, no. You would have it done in a week so that it could get in our packets, cause we meet in two weeks.
Seven twenty-six.
Sounds right.
How, how close are we to giving them some assurance that?
Seven twenty-seven.
With appropriate, um, S, uh, CVO. And with Larry's, um, basically his agreement.
Right.
That we would vote to, uh, what I'm hoping is that we won't delay more than two weeks and a day, not two weeks and another week.
Right.
You know?
I, that's my goal.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, I really, I really don't wanna delay, but I think your points, your points are very well taken.
So.
Are we, are we?
Is, is, is that?
Is it quite, I mean, it's a, it's a question, my question.
So I've expressed myself and I think you've expressed yourself, and Harry?
Um, everything that Larry recommended, the, uh, the portable HP toilet.
Temporary fencing.
Absolutely temporary fencing. Uh, basically, Larry goes down there and does a walkthrough and makes sure. And of prime importance, I'm not worried if the septic system of the building don't ever get built. Um, the parking lot retaining walls and the guardrails, that's a concern. And the site egress improvements, that's a concern. Bathing striping, I know you've taken care of a lot of that. Landscaping, I'm sure you can handle landscaping, I'm not worried about that. But the site egress improvements, I, I need a little bit of assurance from Larry Graham.
Scott, so, it just, a perfect.
That site egress, as it is right now, is okay and is a mine.
A perfect example of what Harry's talking about is using that site egress improvements. So, he would look at what you've done, or you would talk to him and say, this is what we've done, Larry, we're striping it temporarily with paint. And is this going to be okay with you from a health, safety, welfare issue? That, and, and to do, to have, to address all of those outstanding items in that way, that's just, that's a good example.
The key words, what I'm understanding is health, safety.
Yeah.
So that if you want all the issues to be tied into those three checks.
Yeah, that's the basic, yep.
So.
It's the same as the CO, the temporary CO.
Right. So the punch list, the egress, porta potty, um, the walls and the guardrail in the middle of the parking lot, those are only on the plans because we have to raise the grade for the septic system. So right now, it's graded smooth across, so there's no need for it at this point.
So, 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 make, don't leave an, an item blank. Have Larry address it.
Yep, uh, on my list here, right here.
Yep. Have him address it. Like, if, if the parking lot retaining walls aren't needed right now, then he's gonna say something like, we agree they're not needed right now and everything is good to go. Or that issue is good to go. As is, it's, meets, meets our requirements for health, safety, welfare. I, I feel, you know, I feel sad. I mean, I, I feel like, I want, you know, it's a local business and I want this thing to happen yesterday. And at the same time, I, I honestly feel that this is the right way to do it from our, from the board's point. So, um, uh, it is what it is.
Don't hold hands a tie, we have to consider safety first.
It is what it is. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I do have one final question, but not.
Okay, Larry.
M account, status?
M account, I actually, I emailed Scott, he would need to deposit more money for Larry to do another few, and I spoke with Larry.
Okay, I'm sure you'll need a lot.
What do we need?
That needs to be done.
How much do you need? Um, I, well, that was actually a question for you guys, because I'm not sure what you usually do for your, your account. So I have.
For Larry to do this?
Five hundred and eight dollars in your account right now.
I'm gonna say, for Larry to do this, shouldn't a thousand bucks cover it, I would think. It's not, it's not a lot. It shouldn't take him a lot.
A hundred and twenty-five an hour? What is it? About five hours work there?
He should be able to, so they, so they'll have fifteen hundred dollars in there.
Fifteen, that sounds good.
That should cover it.
Sounds reasonable. We'll get you a check for a thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say, cause timing is such an issue that you had mentioned the twenty-sixth, but the package is going to go with the twenty-first. So, for the meeting on the twenty-seventh, you had said the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, it means on the twenty-seventh, we need the info by the twenty-first, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, so, um, as, uh, the next old business item coming up for our meeting is bounds placement for lot and subdivision. I, uh, I, I think we can, um, begin discussion on this and when Harry comes back, cause it's not a very complicated issue, I don't think, but when Harry comes back, we can.
Oh, do you want, should we wait for him?
Well, we didn't technically take a break and he's gone, so what I'd like to do is just, let's continue with what we're doing. And we'll, we'll start talking about this and then he'll just join us and we'll continue on. But, um, so the, the next item for old business is lot seven ten on Vine, on Vineyard Lane. And it's the bounds placement for the lot subdivision. Basically, tell me if I'm summarizing this correctly, Heidi.
Okay.
Basically.
And Dave's here as well. Dave's here as well.
Where is he? Oh, there he is.
Right in the back, yeah.
Hi, Dave, come on up.
That's Heidi.
I didn't see you. So I'm gonna just summarize this and then Dave, I'll let you, um, add some more. And Harry, you can hear as you're walking, you can listen as you're walking back. This is good, no, this is fine, good timing.
I knew you still had a corner.
No, no, we kept going. Um, so, uh, basically, this is the boundary issue of monuments being raised above the ground.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So, I know that.
My apologies. My apologies.
I, I know that, um, there has been discussions in the past with regards to, um, these bounds being elevated in people's yards and how the board wants, doesn't want it. Um, there is, there are two issues. Uh, one issue is there, there's the public, uh, right-of-way bounds, which those typically, you do wanna see raised because they are for the general public in that regard. But then when you get to the private lots and the other bounds and the corners that get marked, um, perhaps those don't have to be, um, raised. And, and this person on this lot is asking for these to be lowered to the ground level, right?
Yes.
So it's, it's one of those things that it's gonna end up being up to the board to decide how we wanna do that. And then perhaps you could take a crack at what I just said and summarize it again.
Yeah. Well, basically, I felt it was something that the board should be appraised of rather than my making a, uh, construction, uh, determination on it. I checked the, uh, subdivision regulations and, uh, there's, uh, part of section, uh, three sixty-five, sixty-three B, uh.
States the boundary.
States briefly that, uh, the, uh, boundaries should either be granite or concrete at least six inches square and four feet long. And, uh, that they should, uh, protrude no more than six inches above the ground level. Uh, I haven't measured them visually, they're in probably the five to six inch, uh, height range. Uh, I brought the photographs that, uh, Heidi had taken of the, uh, the two bounds in question. And these bounds are located, they're marking the basic, yeah, the, the limits of the start of the cul-de-sac on the end of, uh, Vineyard Lane. And the first bound is about, uh, I forget, twenty-five feet off, uh, the pavement. And then the second one is like fifty feet off, uh, the pavement. Uh, pardon me, the first one is twelve feet off, about twelve feet off the edge of pavement. And the second one is twenty-five feet, uh, off the edge of the cul-de-sac. And that's basically pretty much a constant offset that's applied all the way around that, uh, cul-de-sac. Uh, you know, as a surveyor as well as an engineer, I like being able to find bounds easily, so I'm prejudiced to saying, leave them up. But, uh, by the same token, uh, these people are looking at a good ti, bit of town roadway, feeling that it's all part of their lawn. And I can understand why they want to, uh, reduce the heights. If you, I've checked with the contractor, Peter Delaney, who's the superintendent, uh, on site. And he says it wouldn't be a major problem in order to, uh, just cut those bounds down. Uh, and it would be still within the depth requirement of the regulations saying, you know, having a maximum of six inches above. So you cut six inches off and.
It's not going anywhere.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere, it's in, you're still meeting the, uh, the standard in the subdivision regs. So, you know, like I said, I'm prejudiced of leaving them up, but I can understand, uh, the owner's, uh, concern about wanting them down.
Does, have, have you, uh, experienced where you have cut them down in the past in other projects? Just curious.
Not really.
No?
Uh, the, it's, this is probably accentuated, uh, because there's no sidewalk on that side of the street. So, so they, you, you have the grass stripped from the edge of pavement and the five-foot sidewalk. Uh, here, the grass is going continuously right up to the edge of pavement. And then, like I said, on the cul-de-sac, it's a twenty-five foot offset, so it's even a greater distance than what you would normally, uh, experience. So this is, uh, somewhat a more unique situation, I would say, in terms of having this much grass area beyond your property line, in, into the street line, if you will.
Do, would you see any, any, uh, negative repercussions if, if the board said, yes, go ahead, and, and the owner of the property pays to have the work done? Cause it's their, their request.
Yeah.
Um, do you see any downside?
Uh, not really, just, uh, as the years go by, you do have kind of the, the natural rise of, uh, grass and turf usually builds up, I know, the, uh, site, yeah, so, you know, if you don't keep cutting it back, like if it's a, for a sidewalk or something, you're, you're gonna have it all grassed over and whatnot. So normally, in the normal pri, uh, scope of things, the bounds would be somewhat buried, well, ten years or something. Well, ten years or something like that, maybe more so. Right now, no. You know, yeah, if I was doing a survey out there and I needed to find those particular bounds, finding other bounds, I would be able to locate these as well. So I don't think there's really any, you know, super negative issue to it.
Is, is there any way in the drilling of a hole to add some piece of metal in there to aid in, if they do get buried, to finding them easily?
Uh, really, to do something like that, you'd have to have something of reasonably substantial mass, you know, like an iron pipe or an iron rod. And then you always have the thing of a concern, is somebody going to mistake that for the point of record or something? You know, again, if you, in the end, we'll be having an as-built plan that should be calling out the monuments. So it's a case that people should have a record that, yes, they are looking for bounds with a drill hole and not, you know, an iron pipe or something, which would help, you know, locate the monument point.
And worse comes to worse if they did get buried and, or they, for whatever reason, were lost. With the subdivision, it's pretty easy to recreate the survey.
Yeah, there, there's going to be a lot of monumentation within the whole subdivision.
Yeah. So does the board have any, is the, is the point of this agenda item to approve or authorize?
Yes, that's correct.
I have a couple of questions. I, I drove out there and I took a peek. And I think I was looking at the right ones, but it's difficult from the request to tell which bounds we're actually talking about. Maybe you can help me out, Dave. I pulled the, the subdivision plan out.
Yeah.
Okay, and I believe what we're looking at is the bounds that are the right-of-way?
Yes, correct.
They're actually the towns right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We're talking about this point right here.
Okay.
And this point right here. These actually are some of the lot line bounds which haven't been set yet.
Okay.
The bounds that have been set are the right-of-way, the changes of the right-of-way direction.
Okay.
So you have this curve coming in here to this point, reversing to this point, reversing again around the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And in terms of the pictures, this is the first bound point.
Gotcha.
And this one is the second one. And unfortunately, the picture doesn't capture the edge of the road. So you could, you know, I would imagine by looking at this, the edge of the road is probably just off the edge of each one of these pictures. You know, so I mean, you've got something in the order of like twelve and a half feet here to the edge of travelway.
So it looks like you've got these sticking up in your front yard.
Yes.
It does.
Yes, yeah.
But it's not their front yard.
Understand.
It's actually the town, the town boundary.
Understand.
And at this point, if I'm not mistaken, actually, it's not the town boundary. I'm sure that the, the developer reserved their fee in the roadway. And so this land is actually the responsibility of the developer at this point in time, until it gets turned over to us.
Right.
And maybe that should always be very, very clear.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm personally not in favor of lowering it. It's not that much of a problem. If I were in that house, I'd put a plant right there and I would never, I would never have an issue with it.
Yeah.
Very, very easy.
Yeah.
It's funny, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, two plants.
Agonize after you own your home for a while. Where exactly is that boundary? Oh, I don't wanna have to hire a surveyor. Oh, I don't wanna have to do that. So, I mean, and as you say, in five or six years.
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be less prominent. It still will be prominent for many years, I would say, but.
Yeah, I mean, this is a verdant neighborhood.
It's actually kind of amazing that this, this one here isn't in because of the unique lot line.
Yeah.
I mean, anyone looking at that.
Yeah.
Is gonna have a very difficult time figuring out where the side lot line is.
My understanding is that they, they're still planning on putting those points in. It's not that they're not gonna be set. It's just the fact that they've only put the, the road monumentation in terms of the monuments that monument changes in direction in the right-of-way.
That one's gonna have to get put in.
Oh, yeah, certainly, yeah.
But that's a unique one too.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Most, most landowners are gonna think it goes straight back, but.
Yeah.
It's very unique, very unique.
Yes.
Big monuments. I think those monuments can keep good neighbors.
Is it, is it granite?
Yes.
How far below grade do they go?
They're, they're supposed to be four feet long. So they're, you know, three and a half feet deep into the ground.
And at this point, this has not been verified by survey. We have nothing to say. No engineer has said, yes, those are correctly placed.
No.
Okay.
They, they were, the, all the bound points were originally staked out. And they put in offsets and the contractor installed the bounds. And then the surveyor is gonna have to come back and verify. Or in a number of cases, what they did is they set bounds without drill holes and they're having the surveyor come back and set drill holes in them so that they don't get into the situation of the surveyor having to juggle the bound to get it into the direct position.
Right. Okay, is there any more discussion? So seeing no more discussion, does the board wanna take a vote on it? Let's.
You know, I'm, I think, I think if we, if we do, if we do make a decision, I think we should state why, you know? Because the homeowner should know, you know? I, I have this situation in my house, but I don't have the bones. And I think ten feet in front of my, in front of the sidewalk is town. And I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't leave it like that. I wouldn't be planting.
Do something with it.
So if, if, if they left it alone, that would be horrendous. I wouldn't like it at all. But if they plant and do some, something, you got any suggestions, landscapers?
Make a motion to send Rob out there and draw a.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Don't worry, I'm withdrawing that motion.
But that's, yeah, I, I wouldn't like it left alone, you know, like that.
I mean, I, my feeling is to defer to homeowners when we can. And Dave, you, you didn't really identify a clear downside to slicing off the top if they're gonna pay for it.
No.
The only downside is they're gonna lose it. Now, they could put a pot on top of it or a reflective ball or something like that. Make friends with the neighbors and do some other kind of thing. But that's, that's up to them. If they wanna cut it off, I don't really have an objection to that. Cause they're not moving it.
I don't either. I don't either. And I, if, if there's an opportunity to, you know, the homeowner and their property to help them to do something like that, it's not causing any problems.
Yeah.
I just look at it as though until that right-of-way is taken care of.
Well, I, I think.
With the, the fee in the roadway. And I mean, at some point, the town, I mean, this is going to be an accepted roadway. You know, I'm a little bit concerned something like that gets cut down. And then it sort of disappears enough and then the house changes hands. I don't know when this subdivision will actually be accepted by town meeting.
Right.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Right, that's.
You know, so what's my property? Where, where's my lot? Where is it at? Where's the town?
Well, I, and I think that's, I think that's a good point too. I think that's a good point too, that it's not town property right now. You know, that, that the road hasn't been taken over. Correct?
Once that development gets completed. So in other words, what you're saying, once that gets completed, that boundary is the homeowner's. And they could do what they want?
Well, no, once that, once everything's done, the, the town will be accepting the fee in the roadway as part of the acceptance of the street.
Of the street. And with that, the town has an interest in knowing where the bounds are in addition to the homeowner having an interest in knowing where the bound is. The town has not yet gotten to that place where they have an interest. And it's almost like we're speaking on behalf of the town's interest when we don't have that interest yet.
Yeah, but the goal certainly is to achieve that.
Yeah.
Though the contractor has said that he doesn't feel that it would be a, a difficult or a significant effort to lower, lower the bound by cutting it off. And that would be the way he would propose handling it.
Well, I'm gonna, in a world that's so complicated and so confusing, I'm gonna give a thumbs up for myself in terms of saying if they wanna cut it down, that's fine with me.
Can I offer a motion?
Please.
That we, the board.
Please.
Approve the reduction of the height of this above ground level from approximately, the current, a height of approximately six inches to.
Flush with grade.
Flush with grade.
And a drill hole?
Yeah, well, that, the, that would be a case of then after it's cut off, the final actual point of record would have to be established from survey.
Which would have to be done anyway.
Would have, yes.
Respectively.
Yes.
So that doesn't have to be part of the motion then?
Yeah.
So.
Cause one of the, if I could say, one of the things is the final as-built requirement, I go and physically try to identify all the bound points at the end of construction just to make sure that they haven't been, you know, wiped out or something from construction equipment. These that are gonna be harder to find, I'm gonna perhaps have to make more effort to find them. But, you know, once I find them and see them visually there, I'm happy. And then I look for certification from the surveyor certifying that the, the bounds are, you know, all in place according to survey standards.
Do we anticipate, maybe we'll have about ten, ten blocks that miss this issue?
Who could have?
On one side of the street, there's twenty-two houses there.
Yeah, every non-sidewalk side of the street's gonna happen.
Are we gonna get twenty-two?
Are we setting precedent here or are we just doing blanket?
Well, we certainly, we certainly are opening that door.
That's why I just don't feel comfortable with this until the town has fee ownership. When the town has fee ownership.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a precedent insofar as it's, we're not, we're not saying, okay, from now on, anybody who wants to have it cut down, can have it cut down. They have to come to the board.
And that's no time to become.
We're gonna.
Just play, just playing that one out. Let's say everybody on that side all of a sudden raises their hand and say, we wanna pay to have ours cut down too. So they cut them down, but by the time the street is ready for acceptance, they're still gonna be there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the owner was of the lot was apparently requesting they be removed. I would definitely not advise that at all.
Right.
Nor would we.
So even, so even if they, even if everybody did request that, Harry, then I, then the, the other ones, they still all would be there at that time when the town is looking to, you know, take over.
And these are always gonna be set back from the actual road?
Yeah, from the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, the right-of-way.
Yeah, the travelway.
Yes, yes, no, I'm, I'm differentiating between the right-of-way and the actual.
Yeah, I just, I don't think we should.
And what's this?
Make it any harder to figure out where town land is.
Roughly six inches square.
Six inches square. So I have made a motion.
Uh, do I have a second? Just for discussion? I'll second it for discussion. Any discussion?
Think we'd beat this horse dead.
Okay, so seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Two, two, no.
I'm jury.
So that would be a no.
Yep.
Right?
Can we make another motion, though? I would like to consider when the road is accepted that we.
Absolutely, yeah, this is, this is definitely.
Absolutely.
Time, yeah.
I think it's time sensitive.
Yeah, yeah. Once we should really have a say in it.
Oh, wow. I'll make a motion that when the town accepts that road, that the homeowner can shorten the bounds.
The homeowner should come back at that point.
Come back.
Come back, alright. You didn't come back, huh?
Yeah, because the thing I'd be concerned about if they shorten it and you just leave it like that, then you have a six-inch possible location.
Yeah, with no point.
For the actual point of record.
Okay.
They can't.
So the, so the motion would be.
To understand what you're saying is that that point of record would then be obliterated.
Right, so it would have to be reestablished by a surveyor.
So it's, so it's a much more costly endeavor to do that later than to just do it now.
Yes, because they haven't done all of the survey work related to the bounds yet.
And there's no real downside. I mean, I don't, I don't see this, what this jurisdictional issue. I don't see why this would override letting the folks do this. Cause again, what's the downside?
From my perspective, the difficulty of finding it. The, the ease of someone actually going out to locate it. But remember, we're, we're talking about what will be town employees knowing where the actual line is for the, the town land versus the private land.
Interesting.
I think I.
Yeah, well.
At this point, at this point.
I defer to the, personally, I defer to the homeowner.
Okay, so basically, I, then, so Tilly had made a motion to.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Let me repeat it.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
I made a motion that we, that the homeowner should wait until the town accepts the road. And then they, they can, they can come back.
And then find out.
And then we can make a find.
That's the time, that that's the time to do it.
I think that's equal.
So the motion has been made and it has been seconded to notify the homeowner that the time to address this issue is after a town acceptance of the road. And at that point, they're advised to come back to the board with their request. Any more discussion? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Do we have a second to this?
I think second.
Okay, okay.
So, okay, so that's that. Thank you.
All ready?
Nice to see you, Dave.
Yeah.
Haven't seen you for a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah, everything okay?
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely. Would you just let them know on your way out? We're gonna take a five-minute break. And then we're gonna come back to lot one A, three Crescent Meadow Lane. And then we're gonna come back to lot 1A3 Crescent Meadow Lane.
Some of it was, I wonder what it was.
Yeah, I don't know.
I've got some good kids.
I know. I think I dug into some of that stuff, but
I sure as fuck
All right, all right. Can we lay off the girl? It's been a month, I'm trying, we're being hard.
Is this meeting evening for these scheduled meetings or is this an ad hoc meeting?
All right, I'll go away.
Not sure, I wanted to check. I don't think it is.
Uh.
Yeah.
Is it any cooler out there?
Yeah, the floor was supposed to be seventy-five centigrade.
Tonight?
It's summer.
Yep.
And I tell you, every time I'm tempted to complain about the heat, one year, three weeks, it's it's a fucking Shut up and stop lying.
Uh.
Go to Caribbean for a couple of months. When I retire, we, we have to, we go to the PJs and the PJs, and it's basically all the stuff that I'm, I feel like, so Can you go? Well, it's still there. Well, that's the direct, that's probably the thought, but I see that. But this does improve for that reason. Sure, it could, it could be. The other thing is, I wonder, I should use it for, yeah, but, uh, but, uh, yeah. Sorry. Was he going to sit in on as a, um, um He got that, he got, he got, he had, he had a response to it. He, he wrote, he had written a response, um might not be that idea, I don't know what for, but since he's, since he's already here, so maybe he did, did Now, you came in a building with many, many rooms and you had separate rooms to all of the rooms and they were on a big floor.
Oh.
And they got all these bags numbered and you went for a key, you could see it there. If you look above or to the left one, you can do that. I, I, I'm weird like that, I do that.
Yeah.
I'll look up a floor. Oh, yes. Oh, 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 I can't find the key. Well, I looked at the phone, you know, that's why they, somebody like, you know, when we set our label and put it in, oh. He's dead. Oh. Let's give me my, my yearslayer hat and my magnifying glass. Sherlock. Well, Harry, we can, could you let them know? Thank you. There will be no laughing. Well, that's, well, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm Oh, no, no, look at, look at this, you got it? No, no, I'm, I'm got it. Good, good. I'm lost, that's, good, good, good.
Okay, so we are back online and we're going to our third and last item on the agenda under old business, which is lot 1A3 Crescent Meadow Lane, request for a building permit. And if you folks would come on forward. If you could just introduce yourselves for the record, that would be appreciated.
I'm Richard Solow. I'm Richard Solowski, I'm the owner of
Hi, Richard.
Crescent Meadow Lane.
I'm Gary Evans, I'm attorney and I, I represent Richard.
Ken Murphy, prospective buyer.
Perspective buyer.
Lot and builder.
And the builder.
Okay.
This is three Crescent Meadows.
This is three Crescent Meadows, yep. So if you folks wanna share with us I just came on board recently, so I've been getting up to date. So what appears to have happened, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this has gone out for a technical review and the reviews come back with comments. And, and looking at the comments David had come up with two items.
Is this July twelfth?
This is July twelfth, item one and two. So there's, there's two, there's a June second, on the second page, July twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Then there's a July twelfth also, there's two documents. On the second page.
I, I meant the whole thing, dated July twelfth.
Oh, 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 oh.
My apologies, I should have been clear.
In, in our, in our
I screw it up very often, so I'll be scared.
In, in our packet
Right.
There's the June second original.
Yeah.
And then in the supplemental packet that was put before us, there's the July twelfth.
I see, thank you.
Hey, Varga.
So we really only need the dated version, right?
The twelfth.
I don't know, we'll find out. Well, if, if you look on page two there's the review of the July, review of July twelfth, two thousand sixteen. I believe everything else prior to that was just to bring everybody up to date, is that correct, Ed?
I was basically responding to the plan changes to the original review items.
And those two items were, there was a question on the map as far as the as-built and Richard had written an email explaining that. Did you understand that? Did you get his email? Did that?
I have so many emails from him, yes. And I'm sure he has so many from me.
It's my email.
But I would like to, I think it would be good for the board to hear.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I think you should go ahead and
We can read it into the record and then you can comment. It says, prior to Crescent Meadow Lane development, there was another plan to develop the same land. Let me explain what the issue is. Is on the subdivision plan, there is a note that says a portion of that land is to be deeded over to lot 1A.
Yes.
And
It doesn't say deeded.
Oh, excuse me, it doesn't say deeded, it says
Added to.
Added to. And so
Combined with.
Combined with, okay. So prior to Crescent Meadow Lane development, there was another plan to develop the same land known as Rando Lane. Sheet two entitled property rights plan of land Crescent Meadow Lane starts at Sparford Street and follows the old Rando Lane layout up to the circle. At the point, at that point, the Crescent Meadow Lane circle is shifted to a different location as shown on the plan. In doing so, parcel B from the Rando Lane layout becomes part of the circle of Crescent Meadow Lane layout and parcel A as, is designated to become part of lot A, 1A. Parcel A and parcel B are part of the land of the old Rando Lane, which is now Crescent Meadow Lane. Parcel A and B were part of the land owned by the developers Barry Enos and Carlton Development Corp. The land annotated as now a formerly of Hardener was also purchased by the developers and added to Crescent Main, Crescent Meadow Lane development. So that was added to 1A, is that correct? The, the little insert?
Parcel A.
Yes. Yeah, so that was
It was, it was their open land anyway, it was not somebody else's land.
Is this where exhibit, is this, is this, did this can exhibit here? I don't know, I don't have
There, there is the, there's the subdivision plans. You included that, Heidi, in our packet.
He just gave it to us.
No, I, I don't remember that.
No.
This is, so Crescent, this is, we're reviewing Crescent Meadow Lane and he's speaking about Rando Lane.
So, so on these, okay.
So on Crescent Meadow Lane
On all these plans that you submitted here to us?
Correct.
So this one, which shows Crescent, it shows parcel B, it shows the old layout of parcel A?
Yes.
That's not the plan we should be looking at?
Well
That's, that's the subdivision approved.
The subdivision approved plan four, he's looking for at least for Crescent Meadow Lane, so this is the subdivision plan for Crescent Meadow Lane. That's approved and required on the registered due.
So this plan I'm really sorry, I didn't get that.
And this project is, was done in two thousand two.
I know, a long time ago. I'm just trying to under
And I'm, I'm trying to understand the question also, but I'm, I also sat, we sat down today and I looked at it and I didn't know the full answer. And I still don't know the full answer. Other than, we have this here, there's a notation, the size of the lot is, is the same in both the as-built and in the subdivision plan. And so there was just a, a, a question, but I, you know, I would have to accept it as is. I don't know what else I can do.
Well, I, so confirming that this plan is the plan, then I would accept it as is too. Thank you.
What plan are you looking at?
We're looking at Crescent Meadow Lane.
Evidently it says property rights plan of land.
What date is it?
Two thousand two.
Sheet two of five.
It's the one that
Two thousand one.
It's the one that the planning board members endorsed.
If, if, if I may, maybe we'll go, since David's here, if David's here for this, maybe we'll go on to question two, which
Okay.
And involves David a little bit more. And then we can go, we can go back to this one.
Okay.
So it's comment number two, I think everybody has a copy of this.
Yes, on page two, July twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
And it says that condition eight B requires that the basement floor shall be a minimum of one foot above the estimated seasonal high groundwater table. The four test pits shown on the plan have a uniform depth, depth of thirty-six inches. Of thirty-six inches. Note eighteen on sheet S one of the border health, of the septic system plan calls for no interior part of the building will be constructed in more, more than two feet below the existing grade. The plan states that the finished garage elevation is at two fourteen.
Oh, thanks.
And the proposed grading in the area of the building is elevation two eighteen, four feet above the proposed grade at the easterly end of the proposed dwelling. At the westerly end of the proposed dwelling, the existing grade is over two hundred and, is two twenty feet, six feet above the proposed grade. I recommend an additional test pit be observed along the southerly side of the proposed dwelling or that the proposed building grading be revised to comply with, with note eighteen on sheet one. So what we have is, we have the house lengthwise is about twice the size of this room. And when you're looking at the garage, if we pretend the garage is over here, the elevation is at two fourteen, which is about two feet above the estimated water table. So when you come back into it, it's, it's one of these houses where you bring the garage underneath, so you go sixty feet and you have an elevation in that sixty feet of from two fourteen to two twenty.
Yeah.
To two twenty. So it's backing the house into this hill, which is about, so the house is about twice the size of this room. All I can say, and I was, I was talking to David, is, is one of the presumptions is that the water table follows the topography as an engineering principle. But I'm also looking at the soil from the perk test as being very porous. And I'm just skeptical from a non-technical point of view that over a sixty-foot length that the water table is going to be increasing that much with the soil being what it is. What the town is concerned about is that having a water with, water, I mean, having a foundation with the water in the basement. So what we've proposed is to put, to code, put a perimeter drain and then having a perimeter drain on the outside of the foundation coming to daylight so that it would catch anything that comes, comes through. So.
Dave, do you want to comment on that?
Could I come up to the table so I can
Please. Please.
Yes, as Mr. Evans has mentioned, and I had mentioned to him, one of the first assumption or approximations you make relative to depth to groundwater is that it tends to follow the surface topography. So if it's three feet deep in the area of where they're proposing the soil absorption system, a leach field, and you don't have any other test, you extrapolate up the hill and assume as a minimum that you have three feet to the depth to groundwater, a reasonable distance away from the test data. You have the possibility, as you're going up a hill, that in fact you can actually have the groundwater rising at a steeper angle than the surface topography, so you have the potential for even having a shallower depth to the groundwater as you go up the hill. So as I said, assuming a three-foot depth, in my opinion, would be the minimum that you can do without additional groundwater testing to confirm in the area of the proposed building, preferably the upsillide side of the building, what the groundwater depth is. The other option is if you're going to try to intercept the groundwater and not meet the two-foot offset that note eighteen on the plan requires, this is the soil absorption system right here, these are the four test pits, and here is where, you know, I'm concerned about in terms of what the groundwater depth would be. And if you're going to try to intercept it, you need more than just a pipe at the base of the foundation to carry the water away, you have to have some way of intercepting it where you're looking at potentially, uh, four feet height of groundwater coming into it, so you've got to have some type of impermeable barrier that's going to intercept the So you've got to have some type of impermeable barrier that's going to intercept the groundwater, porous material so that you're deflecting it down to the foundation drain pipe itself, then carry that around and away from the foundation, and further being careful that you maintain offsets from the soil absorption system, and also the area that they've designated for a reserve system. You would want to make sure that you were, you know, I'd want to double-check, but I'd say for a subdrain like that, it's a minimum of 25 feet is what you need for an offset.
That's about 60 feet.
So these were my, you know, kind of concerns or basic suggestions.
May I interject just a question here? David, is, that seems to be a septic plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because I'm looking at a subdivision plan, and...
Okay, I have that, too.
I have that, but I don't have the septic plan. And I see the, one of the pages here of the subdivision plan shows the house lot laid out, but is this house a different design from...
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Completely different.
Do we have a copy of that floating around anywhere?
Uh, this one here? Yes, I believe that's what you have right over there.
So we have this one?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, we're shutting it down here. You guys can have it for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, we can, we can, not a problem. Not a problem.
Dave, I haven't been up there in a while, and I, isn't there a brook around here?
Down below, there is a toe of the slope that's off on the, one of the other lots, fairly near Beaufort Street, is where there is a brook that goes into Wet Ones, kind of on the westerly side of Crescent Meadow Lane.
Right.
So I'd like to, I'd like to try, I'd like to just try to stay on the two points that we're talking about here, and...
So we're talking about putting in the foundation, we're talking about elevation of water. There's a question over 60 feet, how much does it, does the water level change? What I might propose and rule is you shouldn't do things off the cuff, but I'm going to do it anyways. Well, maybe able to do, and I'm talking to you, too, Ken, is maybe start digging the foundation instead of doing perk tests. We'd be able to see where the water table is. We'd be able to see where the high water table is there, and if it's, if it meets the criteria, we just go with it. If it doesn't, then you'd have to put the barrier in, and we'd have to submit plans to David for his approval. Something like that work? That way, we're not going out there twice to dig.
I'm not sure about the barrier, what's entailed with that. I've never done anything like that.
It'd be up to your engineer to do something that would be acceptable to David.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard.
And then you waterproof the foundation?
Well, we do agree, I mean, they say we waterproof the foundation. Those are the notes, new notes. Maybe we should give them a copy of the new plan with the notes that we had on it.
I don't think David's seen the new notes.
I have to say, this is really hard to follow, and I'm sure you guys are confused, too. Maybe you're not.
The...
I bet they've seen these before.
No, 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 no.
They've seen these before, so they're not confused.
No, I'm simply, like I said, I came into this late.
No, right.
I sat down, we talked.
All right, this is a different plan.
Yesterday or today? Put in the proposed foundation drain exiting here to elevation 212. Put a couple of heights on the wall, 217, 5...
So are we, time out, are we looking at a brand-new plan now, tonight, that they're reviewing for the first time?
It's basically, it's the same thing. You just asked for a perimeter drain in on that one. It didn't show the perimeter drain, so I had them draw in the perimeter drain and where it would exit out.
Okay, so is this the...
Other than that, it's the exact same thing.
So it's the same plan except for one problem?
All right. Yeah, it's dated 7/11 where the previous plan...
So I apologize for that.
I was looking at here is 6/22.
So basically, it's not very different from the one that we didn't see yet?
It's exactly like the one you didn't see.
Shows the perimeter drain.
That's good to know.
Exactly the same with the perimeter drain.
The first comment I would make is I would then like a detail of the interception drain and a indication as to, you know, is it the intention that this is going all the way around the full foundation?
The perimeter drains go right around the whole house.
All right. Again, we're talking a finished grade in front, and I'll call it the front of the building facing towards the septic system, showing a proposed elevation of 218. If the finished floor elevation is 214, that's a four-foot depth of what the finished grade is, so that is four feet below. And, you know, again, you've got a 218 going through the contour, going through the house, so that would be at least four feet from the finished floor to what was then the existing grade would be the middle of the foundation. Again, it's not meeting the two-foot offset as described in note 18, all of which is saying to me that I would like to see a detail of the proposed foundation drain slash interception drain, and the fill material that's being used there to make sure that you've got a good porous material that's going to conduct any intercepted water down to the drain pipe so that it can be carried away.
So, so we're here at the board because we do not know exactly what the water table is for the foundation. We just don't know.
That we get.
And even at that, it's going to be estimated, you know, all the perk tests we've done over here. That being said, how do we solve the problem?
Dig a hole.
So, well, that's what I'm thinking, is digging a hole for the foundation, and then if we dig for the, you know, I'm just saying, from a layman's point of view, is if I'm looking at 60 feet, I'm looking at an elevation like this, and I'm looking at porous soil, I find it hard to see that the water's going to be held up there. If it's held up by clay...
From someone that's been digging in the ground for 36 years?
Yeah.
Dig a hole.
So you're not in dialogue on this way, so...
Okay.
What was, what was wrong with, what was, I thought I heard a suggestion by the attorney to start the process and do it that way. Was there, was there a reason why that approach couldn't work?
The fact that I'm expecting we'll hit seasonal high groundwater above the finished floor elevation, then to be acceptable, the groundwater, seasonal high groundwater has to be a foot below the finished floor elevation.
Yeah.
And also, seasonal high groundwater is not necessarily observed water, but it's going to be the models or the features that identify seasonal high groundwater.
Rexamadorfic...
Yes, yes, which I didn't want to pronounce because I knew I would slaughter it.
Can you spell that for the record, please?
I say that all the time, I don't know what the problem is.
So, you know, it's certainly, I mean, if they want to do the exploration work while they're digging the foundation, that's fine. However, an engineer should be out there to determine the groundwater level. Like I said, it's not something you can determine by looking for observed groundwater. There's other elements that you're looking for in the soil that provide the indication of the seasonal high groundwater.
And who, I would think that you would be the engineer that would be out there for that?
Well, potentially, or it should be representative of their design engineer for the septic system.
Okay. All right, and he's, yeah, right, he's got a stamp, so that's all that.
But basically, you need somebody who's an approved soil evaluator in Massachusetts.
So if they're doing that, if they dig and they find out the water is high, then what happens?
Then I would like to see a detail of, I would then change the classification of the foundation drain to an interception drain.
Okay. What, why wouldn't this work?
I think it would, it's just a case of I would be concerned to make sure that they have a design that it's going to be effective in its interception and ability to carry the water away.
So the caveat is that there needs to be some check in place, that if you find out that the water table is high, and there's a detail that's passed on until Dave, who's representing the town, signs off on that detail, you know, maybe it's the first time he gets it, he says this is good to go, or not, then it goes back and forth until he agrees with it, because he's protecting the town.
Right, he would, he would be the final word that disapproves...
I mean, so you'd do that at your own, you know, that would be your own risk.
But, so, and that would be up to you, Ken, whether that was acceptable?
Does this have to go to the Conservation Board at all?
There's no, I didn't see any, no word.
Well, it's already looked at.
Yeah.
Quick question.
I'm sorry, yeah?
My understanding is the, this Crescent Meadow Lane's been closed out for years, Amica's closed out, everything's closed out.
How are we paying for this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Do we have an Amica?
The property owner has to pay for the review.
Okay, was there even a filing fee for any of this?
He already paid $320, and as many more subsequent reviews come is what the cost will be.
I think at this point, it would be prudent to start an Amica. I never want to put Dave on the spot, but how many hours is this all going to?
Well, I forget. I've already submitted one invoice for...
320.
350, I think, or something like that.
320, I believe.
All right, whatever, something of that nature. I've put in an additional couple of hours of going out to the site and coming up with my revised report. Going to be close to another hour tonight is my guess. And, you know, if the detail that's submitted as an interception drain, which is my gut feeling, is going to be required, that could be another hour or so on that review. So I lost track in terms of, and my charge rate is $128 an hour.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Before, just before the motion, so I want to be sensitive to the applicant and what they're trying to do also in fees, and so when you come to a meeting like this, the agenda item that was first on was, what was that one that you...
Turning Leaf, basically, lot seven, yeah.
Lot seven, so when, and your time to come here, do you invoice for that in terms of the total time?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you would only...
I figure about 15 minutes.
Okay, so, and you would invoice that once for that job, not twice?
Yes, basically, tonight I would charge an hour to Turning Leaf, and depending when we finish up here, probably an hour to Crescent Meadow Lane.
And then to review a detail, should we take...
Review a detail and...
Write something?
Write a memo.
Yep, okay. Can't do much of anything with less than an hour.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to share with them.
Yes, certainly. And again, my also understanding of the, what was originally full scope is that after construction, there was supposed to be a site inspection to confirm that basically, you know, visual site reading and whatnot complied with the plans submitted.
That was part of the original?
Yes, right, yes.
Right, I think that is correct.
So I think the bottom line is if you want to build that house on that lot, the water table has to be below X, and if it's not below X, then it has to be a barrier. I don't think there's any other choice. And I think that's a reasonable solution.
You're correct. I agree.
Isn't that big a deal?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah. It sounds complicated. Everything sounds complicated.
Everything is complicated.
Which is that muckin' about in the dirt gets pretty easy.
The only other thing would be to design the barrier from the get-go.
Yeah, we're not even sure if it's really needed or what it's going to be like there.
You're going to dig for the foundation and find out.
And as long as you get a perimeter drain out to daylight, we haven't had any problems at all. We've had rivers flow underneath them.
So the last sign-off on the Board of Health was dated April 27, 2016, on the building permit application.
Say that again?
4/18/16.
So, but my question is if these plans are dated in...
7/6/11.
If these plans are correct, if those plans are dated in June, I just want to make sure that this date, 4/27/16, same with Conservation, and everything else on the building permit is accurate.
The current date of the plan I was just given is, it was endorsed by the engineer on 7/11.
Correct.
And that is the date of the revision.
So I guess my question would be, would there be a new building permit application that should be sent around to other departments again?
No, nothing's really changed.
These are outdated.
Because that permit is expired?
Well, if this is dated 4/27/16 by the Board of Health, I guess if I were the building inspector, which I'm not, and I don't pretend to be, but if it were me, I would want to see an updated, I would want to see a date.
Nothing's changed on the septic system at all.
The tank is in the same place, the tank is in the same place, and the field's in the same place, just the house moved to right there.
There's no change.
That's the only change. The septic system is exactly the same, the tank is in the exact same spot.
Well...
The house moved?
Yeah, the house moved, yeah.
From the original septic design that was drawn up so many years ago, so we've made it to what we're actually building.
It was a generic house that was on the original plan.
They give you a bigger house than what you'd normally build and say is where the house could go. So we took the exact house that we were building and put it in the hill so it fit nice.
So what plan did the Board of Health sign off on?
They signed off on the original plan that was given to them.
They signed off on the 7/6, correct me if I'm wrong, they signed off on the 7/6/11, and then Mr. Vager had the, wanted to see something, so that note with the perimeter drain is on there, that's the only change. And now, do you need to coordinate it with something there, or...
Well, no, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that they're all set with that plan, with the most recent plan, that's all.
So we're going to have to...
This is not, this is dated June 22, 16.
Yes, there's one dated June 22.
They just presented one here to be at a meeting dated 7/11.
Right.
So this is no more?
Said they wanted to see a perimeter drain around.
So that was just put on the plan, Justin, I apologize for bringing that up.
It's the same plan with the perimeter drain.
I just want to swing it by there just to make sure they're all happy with it. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, from what I'm hearing, I think a motion will establish an Amica count for this, and the amount, I'm going to go 1,500. That should cover whatever has been done before. Figure that's the way to go if you want to move forward.
Question that I have, I want to sell the lot, I want to close on the lot. He has to get a building permit before he can get his money from the bank. Where do we stand on that? And the building inspector won't sign the building permit until the board approves.
But I think that's kind of our issue that we have to deal with. And what we're asking the board to do is to give us something that is acceptable to Ken to get it done, and this just has to be paid regardless. It's going to come out of someplace.
It's got to be paid, yeah.
So...
So is, is that approach acceptable?
Is that acceptable? I think it's reasonable to the site.
It sounds reasonable.
I think it's the only way you're going to fit this house in there.
May I ask, you're going to need that sign-off before you can break around anywhere, right?
Yeah.
So, since there was no second for that... So, since it was no second for that, I'll, how does this sound, Mr. Chairman, if you'll accept it? Make a motion to establish an Amicaught, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, and upon receipt of the funds, authorize the town planner to sign the building inspector's sign-off sheet. And it sounds like, well, there's no second, so.
Yeah, no, anybody can second it?
I'll second.
Alright, so it's been seconded.
I wasn't gonna second it.
You inserted it.
I had said it.
So the, the motion, so for discussion, but, so the motion's been made and it's been seconded to establish an Amicaught for fifteen hundred dollars, and then upon receipt of the fifteen hundred dollars, authorize the town planner to, um, sign the, the inspector, the inspection worksheet for the building inspector. So, any discussion?
I understood that the sign-off sheet meant that he can get a building permit right off.
It does.
He's going to need one, if I understand the process correctly, of what we're doing here, he's gonna need a building permit, where he can pull in there and start digging holes.
To find out.
And put his foundation in.
It's just a building permit.
And do basically an exploratory.
For the foundation.
Right, but while, my understanding, from what it seems like we agreed to, is that while that excavation's occurring for your foundation, you have an engineer there to check for that, what'd you call it, a redexel?
I know nothing.
Spell it?
A raxa.
Spell check, we handle that one, and he'll establish where the median high watermark is.
Basically, basically, the conclusion will be to the agreement of our technical review agent.
There you go, yeah, walk you through it. There's only two possibilities, the water's way down, or the water's up. Right, A or B.
The building inspector, it's not gonna be up to the building inspector, he's just getting our signature so that he can finish his work, and what is happening here is, with David, has nothing to do with the building inspector.
I think, we, I'm totally lost now, because I think when you sign that off, that I think the building inspector's gonna say, he can build a foundation. And he doesn't have anything, he doesn't have any review from an engineer, he doesn't have, what kind of a foundation it's gonna be?
I understand what you're saying, and, and forgive me, I'm, I'm making a fatal mistake, which is to take people at their word, and we've been burned before, and I understand that.
I know, that's, that's not the process we've ever done. And I, you know, I want to help you, but it just seems that there's a lot of ifs here.
Well, it's, it's.
If you, if you get an engineer, if it's inspected, and if
We have an engineer.
And if, you know, we don't know what kind of
Drawing the plans.
How is the building inspector gonna know what kind of a foundation?
Because we're gonna have him out there when we dig the hole, after when we dig it, somebody, or my engineer's gonna be out there to inspect it and give you the water table.
I got a problem here, I guess it's my problem, the rest of you don't feel that way.
No, what you're, what you're talking about, Tilly, is what, what is it that the building inspector's authorizing? That he doesn't have any of this that he's authorizing?
Probably a lot like the, the last thing that we talked about, once, once it's out of the, it's like a, an occupancy permit, once it's released, it's released. Yeah, it's tough.
It's hard.
Is, is there any other way, is there any other way to do it? How else are you gonna get him to? The other, the other way is to, is to, either way, you're gonna have to produce some drawings.
Yeah.
Either, either way.
Well, no, we're not gonna, if, if the water table is below X, we don't have to produce anything, we just move forward.
Built a plant, correct.
If the water is above X, then we have to, to put the barrier, barrier in.
Get some pumps.
And you don't, not gonna know that until you dig the hole.
Barrier or no barrier.
I guess what I was meaning is, if you dig a hole as a test pit versus a hole to start construction, either way, you, you know, if you find water in either of those two scenarios, a high water table, you're gonna have to do some plans.
Right, 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 if, if we find water.
So, so digging a test pit isn't requiring a building permit, is it?
Not to my knowledge, I was thinking that we could move this along.
But to sit, for, for them to, him to close on the lot, his bank won't give him that until he get it, his bank won't give him the money until he has a building permit.
I understand.
It's a contingency.
Here's the dominoes here.
I understand.
And, you know, we've been dragging this out for over two, two months.
I think, you know, I think Tilly's, I think Tilly's point is, is part of it, that's correct, I mean, she's correct.
I hope that it doesn't have to be another plan, you know, I hope that it does work out.
Well, I think that's, I think that's life, if, if it needs another plan, if the water table is there.
Yeah.
Like I said, that's the only way you're gonna get the house in.
But I know that, I know the area, I'm, I'm around the corner on Bull Gate, I know what kind of soils there are there. There's a high, my, I would, you know, just guessing.
So, so the, the funds aren't available to dig a test pit and have it evaluated?
I think, I think the timing, or getting things rolling is, is what we're trying to do. So.
Bailey, it's a question, do we have a sign-off for the occupancy permit? Does that she go around for the occupancy?
I have yet to see one, since I've been here, doesn't mean that one doesn't come around. What I have in front of me is a building permit application, a construct, yeah, one or two family dwelling.
I hate doing things off the cuff. But I always, I don't know if you could tag something into an Amicaught and just put my money in there. And that money will not be released until either the water table is X, and I don't even know if you can do that.
You know what I think I was looking at, Gary? I think I was looking at it as though that fifteen hundred shows good faith, and also covers the town, so that work isn't done by Dave, and then everybody says, I'll forget this, we're out of here.
Oh no, I, I think that's more than reasonable.
But it's, it's almost a good faith gesture that makes me comfortable saying, okay, I'd sign off. That's just me. I think you're gonna move, I, I think the applicant's gonna move forward, right? And.
But the issue is whether we can dig a hole without a building, right?
He can dig a, he can dig a test pit, he doesn't need a building permit for that.
Yeah.
It's just a question of getting, getting his funding up through the bank.
But that's a schedule. But what I heard, the reason was for that was a scheduling issue more than anything, you're trying to get it going.
To get things moving along as much as anything else.
How, how much of a delay would just doing a test pit cause? How quickly can you mobilize a backhoe and have your engineer out there?
I think it's plausible, I don't think, we've really discussed it, so it's sort of sitting there like this.
It seemed to me, it could be done rather rapidly.
You would think so.
Then we gotta come back here, to your next meeting.
Well, not, not if, if, if the water table's below X.
Rock and roll.
We, we just go forward. If it's not below X, then we need
Let us know.
We would let you know, and then David can come up with something, and then at that point, if you would authorize it, then David can just, okay, then, your fear is, is that we're gonna take off to De Pika Canles.
No, no.
I, I, I figuratively, I, I understand.
I'm thinking of the homeowner there, and I know, and, you know, my first thought is, this is the last lot in this subdivision, this should have been built long ago if it was no problems.
So why?
Because I just think that, it gives me, just my thought, a red flag saying
But I don't think Tilly
What's up?
And I don't, and I don't go there, the fact that he bought the lot and he's holding on to it, I'm not gonna second guess his reason for why he held on to it this long.
No, but it, it
I, I, that's just dangerous territory.
Yeah, sure it is, but I just, I'm just too cautious, I don't think we're gonna set a process of signing off and, and giving the building inspector the okay. You know, he can put a foundation in, we don't know, you know, how he's going to.
I guess, I guess, what I, I guess what I see is a solution that seems The solution that seems to work is to dig a test pit.
Yeah, that's
And, and find out what's going on with that first. And, um, do, and mobilize and try to get someone out there, you know, beginning of next week.
What about Dave? Is that the Amicaught?
Well, the Amicaught, you would also need established.
Okay, okay.
That's a, I'm kind of thinking that's like a
I understand.
So, what you didn't vote, yeah, she, so you made a motion to establish an Amicaught, to authorize the town planner to sign it, but
So let's call the vote, let's call the motion anyways, and clear up that one off the table for the Amicaught.
Can I make a suggestion, possibly?
Well, we just, on the Amicaught?
No, on the motion, instead of authorizing, authorizing the town planner, I should be authorizing perhaps the town planner subject to receipt of approval from the technical review agent, because
Ooh, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a new motion, so, and if I may. My new motion is to establish an Amicaught for this, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, upon which the receipt authorizes the town planner to sign off the building permit, the building inspector's sign-off sheet, with the, what's the right word, what am I looking for? With the
I, I think what Mighty said was fine in terms of
I'm sorry.
Subject to the approval of the revised plans by the technical review agent.
I like that.
Okay, the, these motions are good, but they're getting long.
They, they are long, but they're
And we need
They're technical.
Yeah, but if they're getting that wordy, then we're, we're, we're doing something here. So, can someone repeat that motion?
Sure, I'll make, my motion is to, um, establish an Amicaught for this, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, and to, upon receipt of the funds, authorize the town planner to sign the building inspector's sign-off sheet. Subject to approval from Dave Varga. Keep it as simple as possible, as I, does Dave even hold on to it?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, it's been seconded to establish an Amicaught, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, upon receipt of funds, authorizing then the town planner, authorizes the town planner to sign the building inspector's worksheet, building inspector's worksheet, all subject to the approval by technical review agent Dave Varga.
That's what I said, sorry.
That's what I seconded.
Alright. So, any more discussion? No more discussion on the Amicaught, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have the Amicaught, fifteen hundred.
We have to
Um, so that's issues off the table, so let's just go back to this issue of test pit.
Should be authorized to sign the building inspector's
You know what?
Right, but she's not gonna
The whole thing is that, oh, no.
Well, I, I
They want to dig a foundation?
Well, he can't, he can't start digging his foundation until he gets the building permit. That's that, that's that issue, so, so, and he can't get the building permit until Dave's
Right.
So what I'm saying is that I think, I think the solution is the test pit, that, that go in that direction.
So, in essence, the board has said, okay, we don't have to come back before the board, we have to just go over to David and say, we either have the water, or we have the barrier.
And if we have, and if we have, if we don't have water, he signs, he signs off on that and authorizes her to sign it, and if you do have the water, you have to work out again the detail of what that is.
The originator would put together a barrier plan, and then David would
Sign off on that, and then he'd authorize her to, to sign the building.
And I think that's as quick as you can go.
Yep, see this test pit here, that looks a lot like the building foundation excavation?
It's a bigger pit.
So, so that would take care of that.
Yeah, I think that's the best we could do.
Okay. Was there another item on the, on your agenda?
Um, there was one other item, I think we're all set, set with David.
Dave, yep, Dave, I think we are.
Alrighty.
Set to go, thank you very much, sir.
I got one question, uh, with the silt sock, wasn't that just for the fact, because we're gonna create a steep grade here on the septic system? To hold that back?
Yes, that, that's a temporary erosion control.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if we could clear the trees first, then get the silt sock in line there and everything, rather than trying to get it in there ahead of time, because it's, the grades there are on steep now, we're only putting the silt sock when we build the septic system, when we do that three-to-one slope coming down the hill, that's when it's really needed.
Mm-hmm, and I also recommend using it as kind of, it makes a good limit of construction, uh, you know.
My guys are real, so my guy's stuffing it in the lines where it's supposed to everything is locked out for him. He's doing it a long time, I bet the same guy's working with me, doing all the trees, doing all the excavation, everything, so, I got faith in him.
Yep.
How many trees are you planning to cut?
Pardon?
How many trees?
I can't hear you.
How many trees?
How many trees?
Yeah, you said you were gonna cut down.
Potentially, there's quite a few. The thing I would recommend is put the silk sock down, and if you have to weave around a tree or something that you're going to try leaving anyway, then, uh, you know, just, just put it in, I'd really recommend before you start doing a lot of rooting around there, to put in the erosion control as the first step.
Cut down the trees, you have to clear that area out, and then, and some of the areas behind it, show the trees cleared out behind the silk sock. Do my auto-cutting, and then, add right in before he starts excavating, or stump or anything, you know.
Well, I think
It does need to be a demarcation of the no-cut zone.
Right.
No-cut zone's all locked out nice and everything.
Yeah.
So I think that's all, I think, I think, so you gave him direction on that?
Yeah.
And you had one other item, I believe?
Yes, and, and that was
So Dave, I think you're all set.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, Lauren.
Actually, if, if you look at the definitive plan that was approved, on page I'm, I'm sorry, I May?
So this is the, this is the
Yes.
And then this is the definitive plan here,
Yep.
Which shows this being added to that lot.
Yes.
And I'm guessing here a little bit, I'm sorry, I don't know, Pat answered, but it looks like this was what they were proposing, and then, so this is what they did, and the discrepancy that you're seeing is that these numbers here match.
Correct, yes, that was the question.
I think it's, I think it's almost a moot point. It doesn't matter, because this is the definitive image of the lot.
I think you should actually be showing that a little bit better to them, so they can understand it.
So what is the issue we're talking about here before?
The lot, the parcel A.
There, you want a bigger plan?
Please.
This is the, the approved plan, and what the plan, what the approved plan does is shows crescent metal coming up like this, and then this. And it says, there's a note on the plan that this parcel A to be combined with lot one A.
This little parcel A.
This little parcel here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then when you come to the as-built, it shows, it shows crescent metal, it shows the circle, and these all seem to match. The question that's come up here is, is the square footage of this matches the square footage of this.
Which it wouldn't.
Which it wouldn't if this was additional square footage.
They, they dropped the ball, they didn't add it in, but it is showing here.
But it is showing, and, and what I'm, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here is that it's a moot point, because these are the lot lines, this is the, the as-built, as-done, and these are all the beams on how it's
Well, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the square footage is plus or minus. Well, if I'm not mistaken, the square footage is plus or minus.
It's plus or minus, but it's, the variance there would be, would be.
What I'm get, what I'm getting at is the plus or minus is in behalf that it, that.
Yeah.
I, I'm not gonna worry about that. It's just one more thing.
That's the parcel that this gentleman's buying, right?
The, um.
A?
That he's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
More of his concern than anyone else's.
So, the issue was that you brought up that they didn't.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention. That didn't match. I just wanted to call out.
That's a good catch. That's a good catch. So, is the board okay with? So, that was the second issue?
That was the second issue that David had brought up, yes.
Okay, so.
And that, that would be it.
So, that's it then? Board's saying we're okay with that?
Yeah. So, did you guys vote?
I think that's it. Well, we, we did on the M account and the process to go through. And no vote taken on that you need to start with a test pit. That's part of what you gotta do to.
Uh, I agree. Yes, it's from Dave. I don't think.
He promised. Excuse me? I'm gonna get in trouble with this test.
I, I keep on running into the same judge. Every place I go, I go shopping, I run into the same judge. I go to the movies. I say stupid things like that. And one of these days, it's gonna catch up.
Richard, I'm sorry that this seems to have taken so long. I wish it would go faster for everyone's.
Yeah, 'cause he's.
It is what it is.
Can't lose time for building. Yep, and we'll, we'll talk outside.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn?
No.
No?
No.
What is my message? What am I missing?
Member or public report, chair's role on the planning board and planning board protocol.
Nine thirty your robe is per se. Let's get out of here.
I understand.
That's your robe.
I understand, but I'm not.
All right, so on the agenda, that takes care of all the old business. Um, new business, uh, we do not have any planning office. You're all set, I think, for now.
For now, yeah.
Were there, under member or public report, were there any other concerns of planning board members at this point? And if not, I'm just gonna go to number two, which is the last item on the agenda.
Well, with this, uh, with this, uh, fact, this is very to ask.
Forgot to ask.
He, he didn't show up.
The approval of the, uh, paying that ad.
Yeah, he didn't show up. Maybe a note, sending a little note.
Can, so can you?
No idea who any of those gentlemen are. The only one I knew was Gary.
Can you, can you do this with that invoice since we didn't vote on that one? Can you verify with them in writing that they're gonna take care of paying for that versus verbal?
Yes.
Just get an email.
I sent them an email, but I haven't gotten.
Just get an email from them and then bring, bring it back to our next meeting.
What is that?
That's the one that we passed over on the, um, ad for, um, Spalding.
Oh, Spalding.
So, uh, we're just gonna get them to verify in writing that they are gonna pay for that ad and then we'll. So, um, so anyways, so Matt's not here and, um, I, I was, I think because of that, what I wanna do is, I wanna put this on the table, um, and then Matt, hopefully, uh, I can bring him up to speed, but, um, I'd like, I wanna vote on these for the next, uh, next meeting 'cause the, um, so the chair's role in this transition was questioned at the last meeting. And, um, I don't think, no, I know it can't wait until December, uh, September, um, for our meeting. That we're gonna have, we're gonna have an independent meeting, um, in September. And it can't wait because we're still going through the transition. And, um, the chair continues to need to be able to make decisions whether or not to call Howard, whether or not to, um, talk to Larry Graham about issues that arise during this process. And so, I want the board to, while I thought that was firmly clearly understood prior to the last meeting, apparently it wasn't. And I wanna bring it up to make it clear. And if the board doesn't agree with the chair doing that, then I, then, then we need to say that. But next meeting, I wanna make it official that the board is gonna vote, that the chair has that authority to, while we're in this transition, to continue to make decisions about when to call Howard if he needs some assistance from Howard, when to call Larry Graham if he needs some assistance from Larry Graham, and not advise the board of every time he does that prior to doing that. And do it in the same way that it happened, which was the invoice will show up in your packet a week in advance. If there is an invoice, you get to talk about it. You'll get to make sure that our fiduciary responsibility is addressed, which is very important. Um, and so, that's, um, that was item one. So, if you wanna talk about that now, we can talk about that a little bit.
I do have a question about that. In, in essence, um, it's authorizing the chair to spend money. And I don't have any problem with that. My, my only question, it is, in the abstract, I don't have any problem with it. My only question really is, should we set a limit?
You can.
As to how much you're authorized to spend.
You can.
How much the chair is authorized.
You can absolutely do that. Um, I would just, I would just request that you don't tie my hands, but.
No, the objective wouldn't be to tie the hands. It's just to set the precedent.
Absolutely.
So that.
Absolutely. If that makes the board feel comfortable, I think that's a great idea, Bob.
What's, what's a reasonable amount?
That's a tough one to ask. Where, where.
Couple thousand?
That's max.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah. I, we are through most of the time that is needed, but there still is some transition taking place. And so, there may be times to, that, that I'll call on Larry Graham, um, to put something in the process. There may be times I call on Howard to try to figure out something.
Call on Howard for anything.
Well, that, that's another whole discussion, and I really don't wanna go there.
I thought that was what you were looking for, but anyway.
Well, I, I think it's the authorization, authorization to spend money to answer questions.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there might be a call to the attorney that would, might be necessary.
That, that.
Especially in this transition period.
Yeah, well, town council's town council. That's different.
I thought we were, I thought that last invoice was the end of Howard.
It could very well be, but I am not a hundred percent sure.
I wouldn't want.
And I don't want it, I don't wanna be put in the same position that I was put in last time. Um, it was really, um, it was really uncomfortable for me.
Well, perhaps if you need to, and, and I can't envision why you'd need to speak to Howard. I, I really can't.
I don't either.
But just send an email out and say, you know, I found this weird, very weird reason that we need to get Howard.
And I'm not gonna, and I'm not gonna do that. And if you guys want the person who's in charge of the transition to communicate like that on everything they do in this process that remains of transition, then someone else can be chair. I'm not gonna do it.
I don't think, I, I don't see it being necessary to micromanage that.
I, I, I think that you will stop the works.
I just don't ever, I can't envision Howard being needed. We have Heidi.
Well, ma- maybe not, maybe not, but what, maybe, maybe, maybe.
I don't wanna go through what we went through last time. Maybe not.
But, and, and then we don't spend any money. But if we need two hours of Howard's time at what, thirty-five dollars an hour? Something like that. I think.
I can't envision what Howard would do.
But that's, we don't need to envision what Howard would do. That isn't the point.
I, I, I do.
Why?
Because there is no benefit from communicating with Howard at this point.
The point is authorizing, the point is authorizing your chair to be able to continue with the transition that is needed in, um, in this way, whether it's talking to Howard, whether it's talking to Larry Graham, whether it is for some other reason that I just don't foresee. It's saying, Rob, you're the chair. We've known you all along, have been taking care of this transition. In fact, uh, the transition, um, that you and Andrea did before we had a town planner for three months, you know? You guys have really carried that ball completely. Um, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna continue in that way. You know, that's, that's how it has to happen. Otherwise, it's a different management style that I cannot support. So, you know.
Is there a problem with just sending an email out to the board or at least to?
Because what that, because what that does, because what that does to me is that puts me in a position of every time I'm gonna communicate about something, I have to do it in an email. And sometimes it doesn't happen that way. Sometimes it doesn't, sometimes I just wanna get in the phone.
To a simple question. It's, it's gonna take fifteen minutes.
I so prefer, I so prefer phone calls to email communication. I so prefer it. It's a lost art.
But I think it's, I think it's, it's, uh, it, you know, there is a fiduciary responsibility.
Yeah, there is. There is.
And I have absolute, absolute confidence in your judgment, that you're not gonna make spurious calls. You know, if, if in two weeks you, if we say yes, go for it, spend what you think is necessary. And in two weeks, we come back with vouchers for five thousand dollars.
You got a problem.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna revote on that. We're gonna think, think that through again.
The expense has already been incurred.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I.
But I don't think that's going to happen. That's what I'm saying. I think.
Oh, I don't either. I don't either.
Could I be, could I be allowed to say something?
You can say anything. You can always say something.
Because I feel like I just have some really important fact to add. Can I just step over here?
Please.
There's one really important fact that's missing from the conversation. You have all stepped up in this timeframe. Since Howard left, you've encouraged me, you've called me, you've offered your support to do minutes to help in any way you can. Matt spent a whole day with me and took the time out of his whole business. Rob has not, because I think he's a, just a humble person, let you know. He's been spending fifteen to twenty hours a week of his own time since the end of February, really managing the office. I mean, I, I'm not a planner. You know, I'm an admin that was working fifteen hours a week in the office. And they did bump my hours up to twenty-four hours. Now, Howard was there forty hours and I was there fifteen hours. That's a fifty-five hour week office. So, putting a, putting an admin in for twenty-four hours is a Band-Aid. So, I don't think you, it has been communicated how hard Rob has worked and he's trying to run his own business at the same time. And he, he's not an employee of the town. No one's paying him. So, any way that anyone can make it easier for him, I mean, that's really what I try to do, that if he needs to make a quick phone call or he needs to figure something out, instead of, you know, managing a whole group in addition to the problem, that's, that's just what I want to tell you, that he really, and I respect all of you and the time that you give the town. And I live here too, and I love the town, and I have tremendous respect for what Rob has donated, you know, the gift he's given to Georgetown.
So, I see.
Not just the time to the board, but the time that you would have been earning money for your own family. It's a double whammy. And, um, that's been hard for me to see, um, some of the weeks. And I don't know how you've plowed through it. And if you guys can remember, John Eichman here, Larry Graham here, the tremendous pressure and the chaos and the, you know, the, the amount of, uh, information coming through. And who, who, we had the buckstalkers, all of you guys, and how that was compiled every two weeks and how that was presented. And, you know, I didn't do it, so I just wanna make sure that you know who did it. And I advocate for any way that we can make your job easier, um, moving forward.
Thank you. That was very well put. Very well put.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
And I respect you all. I'm not, I don't have favorites. I respect you all.
Everyone here is a, is a volunteer, and I have the greatest amount of respect for the time that people on this board, um, put in, uh, trying to help this town. There are not enough people in the town doing this, and, you know, it's the same people over and over again. And all I can say is there's no higher service than public service. And each one of you people, each one of you, you know? I'm, I mean it with all my heart. It's just an incredible thing that you guys do. We don't always agree, um, but, um.
That's why it's a board, and that's why.
That's why it's a board and, and it's good, and it's good. And, um, I just, yeah, public service is, is pretty special.
Democracy is. I mean, I applaud you all. I applaud you all. I honestly did.
So, so, you know, with that, Matt's not here. I don't wanna conclude this discussion without him here. So, that goes, that's gonna go to the next meeting, okay? And what I would like to do is finalize it at the next meeting, be prepared to finalize it at the next meeting.
I'm just done. You know, I, I said my piece at the last meeting. Uh, it didn't, you know, you took it personal. It wasn't intended to be personal. In my mind, there's five members on the board. And if you're gonna make decisions that we don't know about, that's wrong. And if you're going to hold your position as chairman over our heads, that's wrong. I mean, we're a board.
That's not what I'm reading, though. That's, that's, that's not what I'm reading in, in what.
Well, let me finish. A democracy is that we all have a say. And if we're, there were several emails that I just saw. I never even knew it. And I don't think it's a big deal to CC everybody. And I think a lot of times for myself, if I write it down in an email, then I'd, then I could reread it and say, oh, I forgot that. Whereas you're on the phone, you're rushing, you don't always get everything on the phone. You don't, you know, you'll think about something after you hang up. But I think in an email, you lay it out, even town council. I much prefer writing it out with town council. I mean, you know, lots of times with, especially attorneys, they can double talk, you know, in my mind. And I think, um, I feel much more confident with writing. I disagree with phone calls. And I really think if, if you, I'm surprised that you, that you're even in that, in that box, more or less, because even when the previous times the planner would go to a training session, the comment from yourself was, come back and tell us what you're doing, what you learned, because we all don't have that opportunity to go to classes. And see, you know, so you're open in that respect, but you're not open when you're gonna make decisions? No, I'm sorry. I don't agree.
What decisions are you talking about? Cause he's, he is never talked about making decisions. The only, no, the only decision is to make a phone call to someone to ask a question to someone who's gonna bill us.
And you're gonna get an answer from somebody, so that's gonna be.
That's not a decision. That's just gathering information.
I don't think it's the question of whether you should or shouldn't do it.
It to the board.
I think what it is, is, I, I think what, so he's saying, if I'm hearing it right, is, is methodology more than anything. And I, I know from a point of view of convenience, and I know you're taking a lot of time, it is a heck of a lot easier to go blah, 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 and hang up and get that answer. But as far as transparency and, and, and spreading the information that you received from that phone call, that CC to the chair, to the vice chair, that, that, that creates that paper trail and that spreads that information out.
All the information, all the information that has ever required any decisions about any person, place, or thing has always come to this board in advance for the board to decide on. Every single time. I have never made a decision other than to try to gather information so that the board can make their decision. If you play out your management style to get approval and share this before doing it, what would happen is, let's say I needed to call Howard for some clarification about a project. And I can't do that until I get approval from you guys to do that. I have to wait for the first meeting to show up to run it by you guys. Maybe that meeting is the next day. Maybe that meeting is two weeks away. I then get approval from you, and I've now lost two weeks. And then I try to connect with Howard as soon as I can, fitting it into my schedule, which is not being, not being taken into account by the two of you guys really much at all. I don't think you fully understand that part of it. So, I try to fit that time into my schedule when I go back to the office to finally call Howard. I get the information from Howard. We're now, if I'm lucky, making the second meeting before I can get the information for whatever it was I was trying to get. So, a month has gone by. If you manage it that way, a month has gone by.
And multiply that by every time you need to get information, and it's the most inefficient way that we could operate, and ultimately, it's more expensive.
It's a, it's a, it's a failed system for management, there's, it's a total failed system for management, and, you know...
I don't see what cases you're even, you're even questioning all this time, because we have very few applications, it's very minor, that's pending, when Howard left, I don't see...
Then the cost of the system is very small.
Why there was so much, and I'm not asking you to ask us for permission, I'm saying, clue us in with transparency.
CC, CC, CC.
I, I, I clued you in whenever I could, as soon as I could, on everything that was going on.
I understand, you're a busy person, I understand that.
No, I don't think you fully do, I don't think you fully do. You say you do, Tilly, but I don't think you fully do.
Well...
And that's why I'm saying, and I'm not holding this over anybody's head, you know, that, that's, that's just not true at all.
I'm only taking your words that you just said.
The idea of holding, the idea of holding, well, no, 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 what I'm doing is I wanna do what the board wants to do, that's very different. Now, if the board wants to do it where they manage, where these decisions are all gonna be vetted before they take place, if that's what this board wants to do, then that's what this board wants to do, and I'm not the person to run that. And then I want the board, and then I want the board to have someone else take the chair, and that's fine with me, and we'll continue on, that's what the board wants to do.
Maybe we should discuss it all next week or something, 'cause we, we don't have a full board.
No, so, I, I agree, that's why, that's why...
But absolutely, a great idea to put it for next week.
That's why I'm saying when Matt, when Matt comes back next week, you know, have him talk about this, and, and we'll, we'll vote on it, and, and bring it to resolution, yeah, yeah.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Nope, there's, nope, there's one more item to go, and the other is, when Howard was here, there was a level of communication with the town planner that was minimal, and everything, as in most boards, go, went through the chair, and since Heidi has been here, there has been an awful lot of communication from board members with Heidi, which has taken her away from doing what she needs to do in order for the board members to start to flush out, figure out, debate, discuss why you should, why you shouldn't do things. And that's gonna be the second item that I wanna bring to the board. Either things are gonna go through the chair, so that Heidi can do her work when she can do it, how she can do it, she can prioritize, of course, if a board member needs to call up for an explanation on something, if they need to talk to Heidi for a quick answer on something, if they need to say, can you show me where this document is, but to go beyond that and to start to getting into discussions, forty-five minute discussions about a particular issue with her, that stuff needs to come to the planning board so that everybody can talk about it, everybody can be part of it, it's the most efficient way to do it, it's the most effective way to do it in my experience, and it also allows the town planner to do their job the best. So that is gonna be the second item that I wanna bring to the board next time, in terms of, that's gonna be protocol number one. You know, that'll be the first protocol that we'll officially adopt, how people communicate as board members with the town planner.
So can I have a understanding, as, from just your comment, the board members cannot go to talk to her in the office?
The board members can, the board members can ask her simple questions, can, can say, I need this, can you show me where this is, can get clarification about things, but the board members do not get into conversations about something being right or wrong, and starting to get into debates and turning it into subject matter with her, because that's the stuff that needs to happen here with all the board members. For, so the two reasons, all the board members need to talk about it, and it is how our town planner is going to function the best.
We could really sabotage her job so easy by just going in and starting to chat up about the supplement. I mean, there's a lot of background, that information that I would like to have, and I could, I could eat up a day of your time like that.
The weird is to Heidi, tell them how many hours you're working, I mean, true, you know, just so you all know that she's trying so hard to get him the job and the whole time that she spends in addition...
She's the, part of what we're trying to work out is, there's only so many hours in the day for her to prioritize what it is that she's got for her tasks and to get them done in that order, and there simply is not enough time in the day for her to do everything, and it just, it just is, it just, but even, even, even when you get it, and she's all into it and everything is comfortable, there's still not gonna be enough time for her to do everything that the town asks of her to do, and the board needs to be conscious of that. So, that's...
Well, so that she gets some sleep tonight, I'll make a motion that we, that we adjourn.
All right, motion, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll talk about it next week, next meeting.
Second.
That's signed.